I know it is up here, at least for me. So I'd like to call the meeting to order.
This meeting will be conducted by audio and video conference without a physically present quorum of the Rock Island City Council due to the disaster declaration issued by Governor Pritzker. Because of this order related to COVID-19, public health concerns affecting the state and the city, the mayor has determined that an in-person meeting at City Hall with all participants may not be practical or prudent. Aldermen and staff may not all be physically present at City Hall due to the disaster, and physical attendance at City Hall may be limited. To participate remotely during the public comment or public hearing portion of the meeting, please join by phone at 1-475-209-2841 and use PIN number 329-599-561.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Alderman Hurt.
Here.
Alderwoman Gilbert.
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Bulis.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance? Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you very much. We are at number six, public comment. Several people have signed up to speak. I think Ted, you're up first. Ted Pappas.
Mayor, City Manager, Council members, it's my pleasure to talk to you tonight about Friendship Manor. Friendship Manor is local. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, standalone, 300-unit, faith-based, continuing care retirement community located in Rock Island. We are supported by a top-notch, active, volunteer board of trustees. I've attached that list for you. Some of our trustees are here with me this evening. Couple important facts to note. We are the 15th largest property taxpayer in Rock Island County. $485,000 was paid, will be paid in 2021 for 2020. We're the third largest property taxpayer in the city of Rock Island. We're the third largest not-for-profit business in the city of Rock Island. We're the founding member of the NPC 11. Many of you heard about that group. We employ over 250 employees. Our payroll, wages, taxes, and benefits total just under $11 million. It goes without saying, we are not only in Rock Island, we are fully invested and fully relevant in Rock Island. In fact, with me this evening is Bob Van de Vorty, the president of our resident council and longstanding Rock Island resident. In 2019, on any given day, Friendship Manor served 700 seniors across the city and county of Rock Island. In 2021, that number has dropped to 280 seniors served daily, mainly due to the pandemic. We have eight service divisions, which are listed in your handout. For time, I will not name all of those. In 2020, the community support for Friendship Manor was outstanding. Over 600 donors and supporters supported us. Our charitable care and community benefit provided to our residents in free and discounted care in 2020 was nearly $1 million. Friendship Manor has maintained full employment to date since the pandemic with not one layoff. I appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you briefly this evening, to lay the foundations for the reasons why it is imperative to the Manor to be among those selected to receive funds allocated from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, specifically the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. First, looking over the fact sheet and summarizing the coronavirus state and local recovery, the Manor meets many of the five categories. Category number one, supporting the public health response to mitigate spread. For the sake of time, let me just say each supporting bullet has been the epicenter of our existence since the start of the pandemic. Just to give you a brief example, to give you insight, in 2021, testing alone, and these numbers are through March, has cost us in excess of $136,000 in addition to the $350,000 we spent in 2020. Our industry has functioned under very rigid, costly regulations, which continue to stand today and will continue until such a time there is COVID regulatory reform. Although we are 98% vaccinated with our resident population and 60% of our staff, we know that there are a certain amount of breakthrough positives with vaccinated folks. We remain one positive test away from being all the way back in outbreak, which sets off a whole series of restrictions, testing, PPE, and census impediments. That's an issue we're working on right now through our industry, trade organizations, and other leaders. Category three, addressing negative economic impacts by supporting small business. We kept our staff employed throughout this entire pandemic despite a 20% reduction that is just now starting to rebound. It's important to note that we also use a lot of local vendors and support them. Category four, replacing lost revenue. This is an unbelievable number. Revenue in the first quarter of 2021 is down over $1 million from the first quarter in 2020. Category five, providing premium pay for essential workers. In 2020, we provided $275,000 in hero pay, which then in 2020, we made a permanent addition to our hourly workers' wages. We said, "You're heroes, and we're going to continue that wage permanently." On top of that, we have paid out another $20,000 through March in new hero pay for 2021. The Manor started 2020 with a 90% census, on track to be the best year the Manor has ever had. By January 2021, our census was down to 70%. Today, that census is 74%, growing just 1% a month, while battling to manage costly testing, PPE, invasive regulatory guidance, and yes, death. We had to essentially shut our doors to new admissions. All the while, we remained diligent about keeping the safety and health of our residents and staff front and center. The Manor is strong and will remain strong, but we need these funds to help bridge the gap as we rebuild our census. It is estimated that it will take two years for our organization and like organizations around the country to recover census. I attached an article for you for your reading pleasure. Our industry is projected to lose $30 billion by the end of June of 2021. How we mitigate this gap is and will be challenging, and we need a full court press from our local community leaders, like the city of Rock Island, to support us financially in the process. We know that you are creating a process to equitably assess and distribute funds. On behalf of our residents and staff and our board, I ask that Friendship Manor be placed at the top of the list, that we remain here, a stable, equitable employer, providing a quality of service delivery our seniors have come to know and respect. And in closing, I'm a movie buff, and I love the Lord of the Rings trilogy. And if you've watched that, you'll know what I'm about to say. In that trilogy, in the last one, Return of the King, Gondor is under siege by the enemy, and they light the beacon of ministeria. And Rohan answered the need of Gondor. Tonight, Friendship Manor is lighting the beacon of ministeria, not only for us, but for every not-for-profit that serves our citizens in Rock Island. The question is, will the city of Rock Island answer? Thank you. I'm available for any questions should you have any.
Thank you. Nope, at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was my pleasure and honor to be here this evening.
Thank you for being here. Is it Angie Peterson?
Good evening, Mayor Tomes, and thank you to all of you for allowing me the opportunity to come and share a little bit about the Children's Therapy Center of the Quad Cities. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, we just celebrated our 72nd anniversary. We have been providing outpatient pediatric rehab with physical occupational speech and feeding therapy to children from birth to age 21 if the services are needed. As many people have been discussing over the last 14 months, the pandemic has been very challenging for all of us, and it's been quite challenging for families with individuals with disabilities. Prior to the pandemic, we were scheduling about 600 to 700 therapy appointments per month, and that's tough enough to do without a pandemic going on. And then the pandemic hit, and it was tough for us because we had to figure out how to keep providing services to these children in need and how to do it the right way, how to do it the most effective way, and to continue to use our funds in the best way possible. Prior to the pandemic, about 70% of the services we provide are not reimbursed, and we are proud to say that in our 72-year history, we have never turned a child away due to the family's inability to pay for needed services. We don't discriminate. We'll help any child. It doesn't matter if they have private insurance, state insurance, or no insurance at all. It doesn't matter what income level the family is at. We have been so fortunate over the years to have such wonderful donors and sponsors and grantors that have allowed us to continue helping these kids. So last April, when things kind of shut down, we had to take about a two-week pause and figure out what we were going to do. These kids, some of these kids are coming in two and three times a week for services. Some of these kids receive the type of therapy that you are not able to do over telehealth, so we had to try to figure out what to do. We also had to figure out if insurance companies were going to reimburse us at all for telehealth visits, and we didn't know how long we would have to do the telehealth visits. So it took us about two weeks to figure that all out. Our board of directors made the decision that we were not going to furlough any staff. We have maintained our entire staff the entire time. We've never skipped a beat, and in fact, we've just hired three additional therapists that will be starting in the next couple of months to help us continue our mission. Prior to the pandemic, at any given time, we had 50 to 75 kids on a waiting list to receive services. In the last 14 months, that has more than doubled. Right now, we have almost 200 kids on waiting lists, and a lot of that is due to parents that lost their jobs, lost their health insurance benefits. But you know what? These kids don't stop needing health care services. So we've continued to see as many kids as possible. Like I said, we've just hired additional staff. We've had to spend a lot of money on PPE because our number one priority has been to keep our staff and our kids safe. You know, with the vaccination or the vaccine being available, that's helped as far as our staff is concerned, but most of the kids we see are birth to about age 12, and those kids are unable yet to receive the vaccine. You know, for some of the kids that we see, a cold can put these kids in the hospital and put them in a life-threatening situation. So imagine if one of these little ones that's maybe recovering from chemotherapy or has had another catastrophic illness or injury and been in the hospital. A lot of the kids we see have our immune compromised, they've got heart issues, so all of those things that we've all learned that COVID can be, you know, quite, in fact, deadly for some of people with these conditions. We've had to be extremely careful. But you know what? We do what we need to do every day to keep these kids coming in, to keep them safe, to keep our staff safe, and to continue our 72-year mission. You know, in some cases, these kids haven't even been able to live at home with their mom and dad. You know, mom and dad have had to continue to go to work, and every time they're out among the public and then they have to come home, they risk, you know, bringing that virus home to their family. So we have children that have been living with retired grandparents for 14 months, and the disruption that that brings to the family. You know, I just take my hat off to these families. It's hard enough to raise kids without disabilities, right? To make sure that you're putting a roof over their head and food on the table and all and providing all the things they need. But when you have a child with a disability, that adds a whole nother layer of things that you have to think about, and sometimes the other kids in the family might have to go without something because your resources in that family need to go to that child who need them the most. So, you know, we just do whatever we can to help our families to ensure that these kids keep receiving the therapy they need to achieve their highest level of independence. We know that if we can help these kids from early on and help them gain their highest level, which for some kids, it's, you know, just learning to speak clearly and communicate effectively. For some kiddos, it's learning to use their arms and legs effectively. Some kids will be able to learn eventually to walk on their own without assistance. Some kids will need a gait trainer or a walker or a wheelchair the rest of their life. But we believe that with hard work and consistency and really embracing the entire family, other than just with the actual therapy services, but providing them help in other areas, that that will encourage the families to continue to keep bringing their kids to therapy. You know, we do diaper drives and diaper and wipe drives, and we help our families out with that. We do coat and mitten and hats and warm clothing drives in the fall. We do food baskets throughout the year for families that are food insecure. We've had our board members step up and help families that have needed repairs done on their vehicles so they can continue to bring their kids to therapy. We have some families that take two or three buses, have to take two or three buses to get to our location in Rock Island, so we help out with bus passes and provide rides and do all of those things because it's just so important for us to make sure that these kids get the help they need. And we believe that if we can continue to do that and help these kids achieve their highest level of independence, you know, they'll graduate from high school, they'll go to trade school, or they'll go on to a college or university, or they'll begin working in this community and the other industries. And that's just great for our community. That's great for the city of Rock Island, and we're just so very proud and happy to be able to continue that. But we do need your help. It's been a tough year. Our billing revenue is down about 40%, and it's because we've had to make changes in our schedule. You know, we used to be able to schedule children with all of our therapists on the hour every hour. We've had to stagger appointments. We've got some that are under, you know, still doing teletherapy services. We haven't been able to schedule as many appointments as we did pre-pandemic. And then another big portion of our funding comes from fundraising. Prior to the pandemic, 70% of our operating budget is fundraising through events and grants and that type of thing. You know, state insurance pays about 20 cents on the dollar. Private insurance, it varies between insurance company. It might be 80% of the appointment. It might be $90 per visit. It might be $50 per visit, and no matter what we charge or bill, the insurance companies tell us what they're going to pay us. So that's why fundraising is so very important to what we do. So like I said, you know, with our billing revenue down about 40% and our fundraising is down, you know, everybody's needed help, and everybody is going out to donors and businesses and asking for help. So we have seen a decline in that, but we continue every day to get out there and meet as many people as we can and talk to people and share our story and just let people know how important we are to this community. You know, we are one of the very few organizations that still takes any child, again, regardless of the ability to pay or the type of insurance they have, and I just know there'd be a lot of families in this community that don't have any place else to go, and we're just so proud and happy to be able to help them, and we would appreciate any additional funding that might be available to help us continue our mission. Thank you.
Could you state for the record what Children Therapy Center, where your address is in Rock Island?
Yeah, we're 4450 48th Avenue Court in Rock Island.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We do need to try to keep these as distinct as possible. It's hard to give that elevator speech and get your point across, but we do have to watch the time a little bit. So, please. Derek Ball.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, members of the City Council, I appreciate the time to come and talk with you today. My name is Derek Ball. I'm from Marriage and Family Counseling Service in Rock Island, an organization that has proudly served Rock Island and the Quad City area. It's just up the street here in the safety building for the last 50 years. This past year has been difficult for families. It's been difficult. People are isolated, anxious, depressed. Families are taking on multiple roles, many hats for parents. Kids are working to stay up to date with school, but working remotely. Addiction, all sorts of issues are affecting these families, and they're compounded by financial distress, job loss, et cetera. Because of the financial stress that people are under, charitable donations around our community are down. Organizations like United Way have seen their donations decrease, and this has had a trickle-down effect for all nonprofits. My request is simple. I ask that the federal dollars in COVID relief that the city of Rock Island will be receiving be used in part to support the nonprofits that serve Rock Island. I also hope that nonprofits will have a seat at the table where these allocations are decided. People often ask me why I do the job I do. What I tell them is that I get a front row seat to see change. I get to see parents talk to their kids like I did just a couple of hours before I came here. I get to see couples work through problems and recover. We're all trying to recover this year. But people also ask me why I do a job at a community agency instead of at a private practice. Well, the answer for that is simple. It's because I see the work that I do as an investment in my community. I hope that you will also make a similar investment in the nonprofits like Marriage and Family Counseling Service and all the others that you've heard from today, because we're doing the work for the Rock Island families, and that's a way you can invest in them directly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leslie Kilganon.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the City Council. Mayor, thanks very much. My name is Leslie Kilganon. I am the director of the Quad Cities Housing Council, which is the resource development arm for the housing cluster. We act as the community's local housing trust fund. The Quad Cities Housing Cluster is a by-state consortium of not-for-profit and for-profit housing service providers, developers, lenders, funders, local governments, and members of the housing industry, as well as members of the community who have come together to work collaboratively to address the overall affordable housing needs and opportunities in the Quad Cities through prioritization, leveraging, collaboration. And these providers, these developers, work along the entire continuum, everything from domestic violence and winter emergency shelter through permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, rehabbing, and affordable homeownership. I am here today to advocate for prioritization for affordable housing development as it relates to the ARPA funds that are coming to Rock Island, specifically asking for support of the Silos to Solutions vision that the housing cluster has developed. Over the last 18 months, stakeholders from all over the Quad Cities have identified that we are in the midst of a affordable housing crisis, and it really doesn't just impact people at the extremely low income or low-income levels. We are seeing people struggle with affordability and being cost-burdened in their housing all along the income levels, so moderate-income people are being impacted too. I don't think it's hyperbolic to say the pandemic really highlighted many inequities in our community and society, but it really lifted up the need for addressing affordable housing in our community. The combination of cost of rent outpacing the increase in wages in our community, losing affordable housing, market rate housing, excuse me, market rate housing being priced out of it, and the high rate of extremely low-income and low-income households being cost-burdened in units that are available have created this crisis in the Quad Cities. So just to give you an example, extremely low-income persons, that annual income is $21,810. In the Quad Cities, 76% of extremely low-income persons are considered cost-burdened. Cost burden is when you pay more than 30% of your income on housing. When you make that little money, even in the low-income and moderate income, when you're spending more than 30, 40, 50% of your income on housing, there doesn't leave much room for anything else. Only 5% of all U.S. counties can, a full-time, minimum-wage worker, afford a one-bedroom rental at fair-market rent in the United States. That's according to the National Low-Income Housing Coalition. So here's the good news. ARPA, these rescue plan dollars, present to Rock Island and all of the Quad Cities an opportunity for our communities to think big and focus on not just pandemic relief as it relates to emergency rental assistance, maintaining low-income homeowners in their housing, but creating stability to those who are on the knife's edge of becoming homeless, but also in actually creating affordable housing units. The Silos to Solutions Plan we've developed has a vision, in the next 10 years, we wanted to emphasize on addressing the gap of 6,645 affordable units for our extremely low-income friends and neighbors. And this can happen through a variety of strategies, tenant-based rental assistance, development and support of affordable housing through Home Dollars, supportive services to qualifying individuals, acquisition rehab, and getting more units out, not just creating new units by new construction, but getting more units back onto the market where people can have safe, decent, affordable housing. The eviction crisis that's going to turn into a tsunami when the moratorium on evictions is happening with people in arrears and being able, okay, they had a moratorium, but where are they going to get three, four, or five months' worth of rental assistance? That's something to keep in mind. We have a chance to invest, finally, in future growth and prosperity in our community by addressing the need for affordable housing. Q 2030 talks about sustainable, cool, creative communities, but we can't leave a permanent underclass of people who can't find safe, decent, affordable housing in our community. We're not going to be able to attract jobs because young people won't be able to afford the units that we have available, and we need to be thinking big and thinking beyond our short-term needs for economic stability and growth, family stability, everything from education, healthcare, racial equity, and the quality of life in our community is all impacted by affordable housing. I'll be glad to send you the Silos to Solutions doc. We have some older persons who already are familiar with it, but I'd love for you to take a look at it and prioritize affordable housing for Rock Island. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Julie Larson.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Tomes and City Council members. Very nice to be here. I'm just really here to advocate for all nonprofits. This is really a chance where Rock Island can shine. You know, nonprofits are really can shine. You know, nonprofits are really boots-on-the-ground grassroots efforts, housing, childcare, you know, all kinds of basic necessities. And we're just very proud to be building our new facility in downtown Rock Island and really hope it'll expand development. And we're excited to have our new empowerment center at the location, which will offer the Google IT Support Certificate program, that's a handful, and also our Y Web Academy and W E 360, a grant from Coca-Cola Foundation. And all those are, you know, great beneficial programs to Rock Island, so members of Rock Island don't have to go to other places to get employment services, start their own business. But we also have the childcare and the place-to-be, but I'm just really urging you to invest in nonprofits and make Rock Island shine. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Kelly Thompson. I've lived in Rock Island for 20 years. And in addition to being a citizen of this city, I'm here to share my perspective from my work at the Quad Cities Community Foundation, where we've been engaged for the last year and change in our community's disaster response and recovery, particularly through the Emergency Operations Center and the COVID Coalition convened by our local emergency managers and health departments on both sides of the river. I've served on that group as the point person for our community's long-term recovery, which I'm glad to see us just starting to move into now. To rattle off the name of one more network, I fulfilled this role as a member of Disaster-Ready Quad Cities, a cross-sector network of nonprofits, government organizations, philanthropic funders, businesses, and religious organizations collaborating to help the Quad Cities prepare for, respond to, and recover from disasters like this one. Over the last 14 months, we coordinated gifts and grants from many different local funders and hundreds of individual donors to grant over $1.8 million to more than 100 organizations serving affected people and businesses. But while those grants were critical, they are dwarfed by the opportunity in front of us right now. And these effective and collaborative groups that I've talked about represent how I, as a Rock Islander, hope to see my city and all of our local counties and cities handle funds from the American Rescue Plan and other federal sources which may become available. While each organization in these networks address the needs of its own constituents, they did so in a way that aligned resources for greater benefit to the Quad Cities community as a whole. They also have done so, and you've heard many of these speak here tonight, in a way that paid attention to the systemic challenges and opportunities that the Quad Cities was already facing when we entered this pandemic. And we have a chance to do the same, for all of our cities and counties to coordinate with each other and with the nonprofits and networks doing great work, to think regionally, to align our resources and our knowledge to move forward big priorities for the Quad Cities. And while my comments are less about specifically what we should do with the dollars and more about how we should employ them, I do want to share a few examples of such priorities, some of which you've already heard from tonight. So, organizations like the Quad Cities Open Network and our local community action agencies have coordinated dispersment of crisis assistance to affected people and families. The Salvation Army locally has helped to distribute CDBG and other federal housing funds on behalf of local cities. These and other nonprofits are the critical infrastructure of our community in disaster times and in, you know, blue skies, as they say in the disaster world. They are critical. Our community relies on them, on their strength and the adaptiveness that they've shown over the last year. And investments, therefore, in their core capacities, can help them more effectively distribute this aid now and into the future with the level of staffing that helps them get things done in a high-quality and efficient manner that all of our citizens deserve. Quad Cities Housing Council, who you've heard from tonight, is another good example. Through the in-depth process of research and engagement, they developed the Quad Cities Affordable Housing Vision, the Silos to Solutions document you heard Leslie refer to, addressing the crisis-level lack of affordable housing in the Quad Cities as wages have not kept up with housing prices over the last decade. Resources devoted towards the strategies in that plan would make a huge difference for the Quad Cities as a desirable and affordable place to live and combat the increased homelessness and evictions that we have seen and will continue to see due to the economic impacts of the pandemic. Finally, women and working parents have been particularly hard-hit by the pandemic, as have childcare providers. Investing in high-quality childcare is one of the best predictors of success for children and one of the best predictors of communities that young families want to live in. Investing in our childcare and early education system will both help mitigate the effects of the disaster, make our community strong for the future. My last statement to you, we're here to help. In addition to connecting with your colleagues at our other cities and counties to coordinate how we can use these resources really wisely, please get in touch with me or any of the others you've heard from tonight to learn more, to get information about how the pandemic has affected the people and communities we serve, and how these funds can be best employed in alignment with other local resources. I and others from the Quad Cities Community Foundation, from Disaster-Ready Quad Cities, would be happy to help coordinate those conversations wherever helpful. And I just want to finish by saying thank you for focusing on the needs of Rock Island while knowing that Rock Island thrives when we work together for the benefit of the whole Quad Cities. Thank you.
How true. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Tomes.
Glenn Evans.
Mayor Tomes, City Manager, all the City Councilmen, I'm Glenn Evans. I've been a lifelong resident of Rock Island County. And what I wanted to also come up here to talk about, which you've heard some great things from the other nonprofits, is Quad City Youth Conference. The other non-for-profits have supported them, but due to the pandemic, we weren't able to really do our event this year, which has been going on for over 30 years, where we introduced children in the school systems to the different services, from junior high to high school, where we allow a day for the junior high as well as a day for the high school students to help them to deal with peer pressure and everything else. While we look at the things that have been going on due to this pandemic, I want to make sure the Quad City Youth Conference continues to move forward and get back engaged in supporting our children. We've got kids out here on these streets that are struggling due to the fact that all this free time, not being able to get the schoolwork done, including my own child has been struggling through this. So, for me, as a person who came back here from school, I want to make sure that we give our kids the tools to continue to thrive and also have something to come back to the Quad Cities to know that it was worth something. We've got a great community here. And I wouldn't have been here as long as I have if I didn't see something in the Quad Cities. And I just want to make sure that the other non-for-profits in our room also look at Quad City Youth Conference to participate in supporting them, because our kids are our future. And I want to make sure that we continue to send them that message. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the bottom of the list. A latecomer, right? If you can get up there, if you could speak, say who you are and where you're from also.
Sheila Gussi, resident of Rock Island for many, many years. I represent two hats tonight. One is the First Day Fund of the Quad of Rock Island, that provides school supplies to over 4,500 students each year. And the second one is for, I'm treasurer of the Citizens Reserve Blacklock Park. And I'm at, I know funds are tight. I've been there, done the campaigning for things like that and everything like that. But what I'm asking is, if there are any extra funds, we, along with everyone else that spoke here tonight, could use it. And especially at Blacklock Park, we want to improve the lighting in the parking lot area. You know, we have a lot of weddings there and things like that. And it would just be a nice, nice way to show how great the park is and how pretty everything is around in Rock Island. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it, and I hope to hear from you again.
Thank you, Sheila. I also want to say heartfelt thanks to everyone here and all the other organizations that are out there that help make this community a much better place. We hear these stories, and it is just, it is just so wonderful to be a part of this, the community. I think I can speak for everybody up here to be part of this community that has dedicated organizations, board members, staff, that work so hard and diligently to make this community so much better for ages basically zero up to 99 or whatever it is, or up higher. Ted's got some that are higher. So, and older. And so, it is a blessing. And so, thank you. I don't think anybody could say enough words for what all is happening and what you're doing. The City Council's got some tough decisions to make on how to do this process. We haven't decided yet even how to do the process, let alone who and where it's all going to go. So, I'm sure that someplace along the line, we're going to make some people real happy and some we may not make happy, whether, whoever it is and however it goes. But thank you very much for your time and efforts in the community all year long. It's worthwhile. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to item number seven.
Goal number one, financially sound city, providing high-quality service and infrastructure.
So, what does the council want to do here? My plan was to have staff come up one at a time as we go down the action steps, or do you want to do something differently?
Parliamentarian, but technically, don't we require a motion before we discuss the item?
Oh, we do, yep.
I mean, all right, so I'm just going to make-
This is nude for us to have to vote on goals, because we normally haven't ever voted on them.
I'm going to make a motion to consider the action steps as amended in goal number one, understanding that, well, A, it's a motion to consider, it's not even really a motion to approve. Secondly, depending on the conversation here, it may be withdrawn, but technicality, we have to have a motion on the floor for discussion.
Very good.
So, I'll make that motion.
And second, now we can have discussion and the way, how the council wants to approach this, whether the individual in charge of it talks, or is that what you want to get an update from?
I would like to hear what the department heads have to say.
Okay.
All right, we'll start off with Mr. Parch. For those of you who have not met Mr. Parch, I think there's a couple of you, he's our new Community Economic Development Director. So, he may not have all the answers.
A couple of you I didn't get a chance to meet last night, but hopefully we'll get to shake hands tonight.
If he doesn't have the answers, I probably know what's going on there, so, anyway.
So, I'm prepared to report, well, I have a solid update that I can give you on two of five items. And the other three, I'm essentially going to be telling you that they're in process. We're continuing, we being staff, are continuing to examine and analyze information, and we'll be back before you in September with three of these items. Those include the rental inspection program, the commercial industrial revolving loan program, and the residential rehab programs. But what I can share with you tonight regarding the Quad City Arts program is that staff is currently developing a contract for services that will assign responsibility of the operation of our community arts program to Quad City Arts, with the Arts Commission continuing to function in an advisory capacity. Just this morning, staff had a meeting with Executive Director Kevin Maynard from Quad City Arts. And next month in June, we anticipate bringing forward an agreement to you that would formalize that for your consideration. Regarding GIS services, staff did reach out to the By-State Regional Commission to inquire with them about the possibility of outsourcing GIS services for the City of Rock Island. We heard from them that that's not something that they can offer as a service at this point in time. But what we did learn is that they're in communication regularly with our neighboring communities about the possibility of a regional GIS, so thinking beyond Rock Island. And while working toward that wouldn't offer any monetary savings, what the benefit would be is that ultimately it could lead to a data hub whereby they facilitate working with the region, the communities in the region, to not only, well, primarily to share data, which will only expand the current layers of information that we already have in our GIS program. So, we'll be back in September to continue this discussion. Thank you.
Can I make a comment before we?
Yeah, any questions?
I guess I just want to clarify. The reason kind of I called this special meeting to understand goals is more not really to try to get updates on goals, but to try to understand how we came up with these goals, if that makes any sense. Because we don't have a five-year plan. Some of these look like department goals. I don't see how that really is obtainable in a year. Are they supposed to be done in a year? Or are they long-term goals? So, those questions is what I kind of have. What's the communication within the goals? So, I don't know. I don't want to waste everyone's time and have everyone come up and re-present, you know, and we're going to vote on the same thing that's already there. I guess I'm looking at it as a constituent. I'm going to the website. I'm looking at goals. How do I understand those? I mean, because typically when you work with an organization or a business, they have a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, and then they have something like they're working within the year or something that's achieved within the year. I'm just not seeing that with our goal structure right now. And maybe I'm wrong, but this is, those are the questions that I had, I guess, going in. I just wanted to get that off top so we can understand the whole reason why I kind of created this, I guess, since I called the special, special meeting.
So, we have a council, has a 15-year plan and a five-year plan. So, these four goals that you see on here go one, two, three, and four, that's part of the five-year plan. Those were voted on by council. And then every year within those goals, council votes on action steps that are completed during that year. So, the action steps are items that council will, or staff will come back to you during that year.
Okay. Because some of the stuff I'm seeing here, that they're not completed or not planned to be completed, you know, 2023, but these were goals that were set last year then, correct?
These were goals that were set in 2020 for 2021.
Okay.
The action steps. The goals were set in 2017, so in 2022, you would look at the five-year goals again.
So, the four main goals, those are our 10-year?
Those are five-year.
Five-year.
Those are five-year goals.
Okay.
And I can send you some more information on that, too. But that's how they came up. So, these are all initiated by council. Council asked for all of these goals and the action steps.
To address Alderman Robinson, one of his concerns, and mine as well, I think that if we had a target as to when these action steps could, are completed, or could be completed, so that when our constituents ask us, you know, where are we with these goals, we, as their representatives, can come back to them and say, we are on track, or we're behind, you know, just where are we in the process? And if we're behind, why are we behind? And what can we do to, what can we do to attain those goals?
And the update has all of those dates on there.
Yeah. Dylan, you're going to say something?
I was just going to clarify, maybe not clarify, but just add to Randy's response. So, as you know, we have an annual goal-setting session as a council. It sometimes changes dates, but we have an annual goal-setting session. I remember being at the 2017 goal-setting session where we established, and I didn't really quite understand, it was brand-new in 2017, that we were setting up these five-year goals. I mean, the reality is, these five-year goals versus these annual goals, it is not very, you know, it's not very worked out, I guess. I mean, mostly these goals, these five-year goals, are so very obvious and vague, for the lack of a better word, that, I mean, it's, you know, duh. I mean, why would the city not want to be financially sound, right? Why would the city not want to have high-quality services? I don't know how useful these goals are with respect to like a five-year plan. And then within, and then so getting to the annual action steps, those at every annual goal-setting session, we just basically throw out, here's an idea. And then, depending on which get the most support from the council, then Randy compiles, basically fits them into, okay, this discussion about outsourcing, I guess that fits in within a financially sound city. And so, he kind of plugs them into the thing, which is a bit of a backwards process. the thing, which is a bit of a backwards process, but I think that's really largely of what we are trying to explore here, is a larger conversation as to how we come up with goals and, and, you know.
Is our current system actually working? I mean, is, what we have in place right now, is that really effective for staff? Is it effective for us as council to enforce these, or have staff enforce these when they're so broad, and they're so, I mean, there's no real benchmarks where at, if we're setting them in June, by September, we should have some feedback, or something, something that continue to drive the task of making sure it's being either worked on, completed, or if not, they're coming back to us instead, giving us updates. It's just like it's a, it's a, is this there? It's on the site, it's something that we got out there, but when you dig into it, how does that really say, how are we gonna be financially sound, a financially sound city, providing high-quality service and infrastructure? And by looking at these action steps, how does that play into each other?
Well, so, just to get back to your original statement, there are other aldermen that have asked for a step-by-step review at this meeting, and then to vote on them again, which is something new, but that's been asked for by the council, in addition to the overall, to look, to go over these one by one, and then determine if we still want to do them, or if we wanna eliminate some of them. But, there are steps on here, as Nathan mentioned, one of the ones was to look at Quad City Arts, and we're coming up with an agreement to the council here next month. The next one on here is with the Parks Department partnering with RME, and as John is prepared to tell you, we have done that, and there are actually concerts that are now scheduled with RME. So, this is an update to tell you what you wanted this staff to do. Some of these are just, there'll be a study session on such and such a date, and at that point, you will give further direction to the, to the staff on how to proceed.
I think, too, the other part of this that's missing is, this is part of a five-year plan back to twenty-seventeen, and I think, Dylan, were you the only one on council? You and Dave?
Myself.
And the mayor.
So, they're set back in twenty-seventeen, and so each year, there are action steps. I think to get the full picture, you almost have to go back to each year, and what were the action steps, and were they achieved, or were they not? But I think that's, that's also part of the big picture, 'cause this is just a snapshot of one year, but in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, there were a list of action steps that were achieved. And so-
More than what we, I ain't gonna interrupt you, so there's more action steps than what we currently have, or were they replaced?
This is just for this year. So, last year, we had different action steps, and the year before, there were different action steps. So, the overall goal's been the same, it's just each year, the action steps, some of them change and are added, some are continued because they didn't happen, but we felt they were important enough to stay on. So, I think you almost have to get the whole, back to twenty-seventeen, what are all the action steps under goal one, to see what have we accomplished? And I think once you do all that, and I haven't done that, but I'm assuming, once you do all that, you'll get a better picture of what all the city's accomplished and has done.
So, as a constituent, a resident of the city of Rock Island, in order for them to understand how our goals are established, and how our goals are measured based on completions and stuff like that, we have to put together something that we're not even offering on our website to get the full picture. That's what I'm trying to get everyone to understand.
Yeah.
It's just like we were talking about last night. The way we transmit our information is, it's not clear.
Right.
It's a jargon. So, we're expecting people who don't do this every day to understand this. It's hard. So, and these were the main issues that came up during most of our campaigns. So, this is something that we have to either address, or do we continue to do the same thing? And we're gonna have the citizens questioning us about what are we doing?
I think a great thing to do would be put up the goal one, and under action step one, go back to twenty-seventeen and list every, all the action steps, and put completed, when they were completed, where we're at with them. I mean, it's gonna be a long document, but at least then, you can see that either we've made progress, we haven't made progress, or we just kinda gave up on something.
Could I just ask for some clarification, going back to what Moses said? So, these four goals are the actual five-year plan? Is that what we're saying?
Yes. There's some more detail within that, but this is the-
So, where is that detail? It's not on the website, though, right?
It probably is, it probably is in there, and you have to find it, I can find it for you. But it's not, when you go to the council goals on the website, they're annual goals, and you're gonna see exactly what's here, and it's what we're doing that year to address what council has requested.
You also mentioned there's a fifteen-year-
It's all part of the same document.
Well, Tim's trying to find it now, this'll be fun. Where is it, Tim?
Look in here, I'm like-
I had never heard-
It's not under the goal, under the goal section.
No.
No, it's part of the big handbook that Lyle gave us four, five years ago. I mean, it's part of this big ol' fluffy nonsense.
And I'll send that, copy that out to everybody.
Tim's looking for it, let's find it.
So, I ask the question again, before we move forward and continue the same process, should we change this, or should we continue with this? It's confusing. It's very confusing for us, and we're supposed to be the experts on this. I can just imagine what it feels like to the citizens.
This is one hundred percent up to the council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, one hundred percent, we do this at the request of the council, and if the council wants to change it, that's one hundred percent fine. It's not a staff initiative, it's a council initiative.
But do we need to have, does that need to actually be an agenda item, or how do we even?
Well, I think, I mean, first, we gotta figure out, okay, if we don't like this, what do we like?
Right.
We gotta figure out-
We've tried several different methods.
I mean, four, five, four, four or five years ago, four and a half years ago, whatever, when Tomes, me, and Geenan were at that two thousand seventeen annual goal-setting session, we hired a consultant, brought him in from wherever the heck he lived, and we went through this like two-weekend-in-a-row process where we talked about the triangle of services and all sorts of stuff, right, only to effectively do what we did last year with Bi-State of, here's a bunch of ideas, what do you guys wanna do? Who all wants to do ideas, and who wants to do them, right? I mean, and we didn't like that idea. So, then we did it with council, oh, we didn't like that idea. I mean, then we did it with just us doing it, and we didn't like that idea. Then we brought in Bi-State, like we did the past two years, we don't like that idea. We gotta figure out what we do like, and I think that this is a very good conversation to have, because I think we all agree that this process can be improved, but we just gotta be willing to think creatively and say, okay.
Typically, a strategic plan, goal-setting is a multi-meetings.
Yeah.
And you go through your SWOT analysis, and then set your goals and your objectives, but it is very typical to do it at least a five-year, and then a one-year. Some do three to five years. Obviously, municipalities may do fifteen-year, but the issue, the issue becomes is because council members come and go, every two years, there's potential changeover, is that that's why you got, it helps to have some stability on the big part of it, the, at this point, we're calling goals, is because otherwise, you could be sending staff, I'll call it knee-jerk reactions a little bit, you send them down this path, and then two years later, I'll send us down this path, and there's no stability, so to speak, or consistency. And that's the advantage of having at least a five-year, no matter who's up here, lived to the five-year, and just changed the annual part to accomplish those five years. Does that make some sense?
So, I just use an example as a business. If I'm an organization or a business owner, I'm gonna have my five-year goals, no matter who comes in and who leaves.
That's right.
My goals don't change, because they are pointing towards the direction of the vision as my company's trying to go.
That's correct.
It doesn't seem like we're doing that with the city. Maybe I'm wrong, I may be making the wrong statement, but it doesn't seem like we're doing it. It shouldn't matter who's going, coming off council, who's coming on. We still should have the vision, and our goals are pushing us towards our vision. Right now, as we get a new council coming in, or we have a different year, we haven't clarified that channel or that path. And I think that's what we're-
Yeah, and to me, 'cause I've lived through it for several years, not to dominate here, several years, it is a little clearer. Now, whether it should be different, whether we, it's fine with me, but, for example, it is quite lofty, it's the fifty-thousand-foot level type deal, say financially sound and provide high-quality service. Yes, you're right, that's motherhood and apple pie, but there are cities that don't have that, or sway from that, because they don't keep that focus. For example, I think there was an objective that we had, or an action step we had a while back ago, but determining how much reserve we should have. Should it be less than, ever less than sixty days? So, we did sixty to ninety days was one of them, that we determined. That obviously affects sound city financials. So, that decision was made. There are been, I don't know about Rock Island, and then times that that hasn't been that way. And so, that's why it was put out there, is that we don't want to lose that focus. As much as we might think that, well, why wouldn't you? Well, there's councils up here that didn't keep that. And so, that's where, that's where some of these, on the goals, it's supposed to be somewhat broad, and the action steps slash, and the action steps bring it down to more of the, and maybe the action steps here aren't clear enough to accomplish high-quality services or sustainability, I don't know. Yes?
Do we have a vision and a mission? I couldn't find it on the website.
Well, we have the-
That's not, that's not, that's not a vision or a mission.
I don't think we have a vision.
We have a, we do, we do, it's in our fifteen-year plan.
Is it? Okay.
We've always just posted the annual goals on the website, but I'll send that out to everybody, and goal-setting, everyone gets a copy of that. It sort of has a big vision on it.
Well, I think that should be something that should also be able to obtain by the residents, looking into not just sending it out to council. I think if there's gonna be a vision statement, then maybe that should be on a website, let the constituents of the city know that this was what the vision is, so I would probably, so that does us good, right? But if it's not listed on there, we're-
We can do that, it's pretty fluffy. You know, I mean, it really is, it really is just a, let's have a great city kinda thing. It's not a specific-
From my experience with drafting vision and mission statements, and I used to do strategic planning, the fluffy ones are really useless. You need to be very specific and laser-focused on, this is what we wanna be, and you don't wanna sound like every other little town all across Illinois or America, kinda thing. But that's how, most of them do, you can't tell one from the other, and it means absolutely nothing. They use those buzzwords, and like, what does that really mean? Or as Moses sometimes says, what's the end goal?
What's the end goal?
Well, and that's what the action steps are, the specifics. So, what specific things do you want staff to accomplish?
Well, and I think, too, part of the other issue that I identified when I came on council two years ago, is you have your goal-setting session in June. You're elected, and do your first meeting in May. Two meetings in, you're expected to come up with your one-year action goals. And to me, you come in, and yeah, you're learning the year that you're campaigning, and hopefully you've learned before you decided to run, but you come in, and actually being sworn in, you get to see exactly how, how a municipality differs from a business or an organization, 'cause they're not all run apples-to-apples. But you learn the process, you learn everything, and then like last year, when we did our goal-setting in September or October, that was hugely beneficial, because our goals are set for January to December. We were doing goal-setting in June, six months before the New Year started. As we all learned the last year, a lot happens in six months. We start our goal-planning in June, we do our budget-planning in September, October, we've set goals where we don't even know what funding is available for them. Three months has gone by, now we're trying to match goals, and it was just the most disorganized, disjointed thing I have ever experienced in my life. And I've been in the business world for decades. And, you know, I think, too, you have to be smart, you have to do your goal-setting at the time you're doing your budgeting, so your goals and you can fund your budget, and you work together for that cohesive unit. But by doing it in June, a half-year before you're gonna start implementing it, I mean, the world changes. So, and I think that this five-year plan ends in, does it end in twenty-twenty-two, or do we redo it?
Twenty-twenty-two, you would redo the five-year plan.
We're coming, I mean, this is a great discussion to have, because we're coming up on the new time to set our new five-year goals. And so, I think because of that, you have to be thoughtful, but we also have to, to really look at what do we want? And as a municipality, your leadership changes every two years. So, you can have a goal, but like other people come in, and perfect example, I came in, and my number-one thing was, I was gonna fix our roads. I was gonna take money, and you all laugh, and I was gonna fill every pothole, and I was gonna fix every road in Rock Island. And I came on staff, on council, and I soon realized, that isn't gonna happen, it's not even a realistic goal. There's not enough money to fix all the roads. And so, for me, I had this lofty ideal, but then four months into my term, I realized that was an unrealistic ideal. But had I had to set goals, which I did, a month in, one of my goals was, I'm gonna fix every road in Rock Island. Now, we did get the motor fuel tax transferred over, so that was a good thing.
Big deal.
But yeah, I think timing is a big thing.
Sixteen.
You know, working together is a big thing, but setting goals, but also, you gotta keep the mindset, and it took me a while to learn it, too. A municipality is different than a business. And there are, sometimes I wanna run the city council just like a business board of directors, and that doesn't work.
But the key part about a business is that they have a vision.
Correct.
We don't have a vision, so it makes it hard for us to assign our goals. No matter, I say this again, no matter who comes in and off this council, if you have a clear vision that is pointing us in the right direction, no matter who comes in and off, those goals are gonna align with that vision. If not, we're gonna have what we have currently in front of us, it's some fluffy stuff that's on a paper that we put on our website, and we try to find a way to achieve it.
Right.
But we're in this discussion, so that has to mean, something's wrong. So, do we continue to go down the same path, or do we change it? That's the only question I'm asking at this point. Do we change it? We, I'm hearing from everybody that there's an issue with it. Why are we gonna continue to suffer with this process? Might, we might as well change it.
But I think our vision, I mean, our vision really is to serve the residents of Rock Island, to make sure that they have, they have the services that they need, they have the things that they need. I mean, it, we are service industry, not product.
That's a council, that's a council thing. We are serving the city. What is the city vision for the residents of Rock Island? That's the vision I'm talking about. What is our vision? What will bring someone to the city of Rock Island, like, yes, I understand they're on a straight path, this is what they're looking to achieve in two years, three years, four or five years. You can go to our website, and you won't figure that out. You see a bunch of goals, but it doesn't tell you where we're trying to go as a city.
So, one thing I would like to bring up, I was at the two thousand seventeen, when, I think that was our last year, maybe with Lyle.
Oh, it was.
And, so I was city clerk, so I had to sit and take all the minutes and notes. So, you're talking about having a vision to serve the residents of Rock Island and have what they need. The one thing I really remember Lyle telling us is, you cannot be all things to your residents. You have to decide what your core services are, because you can't provide all of them to your community. And that has stuck with me all these years. And that goes along with what you're saying, Moses. You've got to have this very clear vision that we have for Rock Island.
Well, we're all working in the dark at this point, right now, on what that vision reads. There is a vision out there. It could be broad, it could be specific, we haven't seen it, nobody remembers it, and so we're working on the dark with that right now, tonight. I'm telling you facts.
It's just-
Correct or not?
I'm sorry for those who are, that is not the direction or the communication we want to put out, that we don't know what our vision is. I'm sorry.
Do we let skip along like that, Marcy? Would you let skip along like that without having a vision?
No, okay, so then, so then-
Dave, come on.
So, there is a, I mean, there is guidance from council every year, and that's what this is. And we do need something that outlines what you want council to do each year, or seven aldermen will come to me with seven different things, and council will have a hundred and fifty, or staff will have, you know, a hundred and fifty things to do, and it's not, we can't do that.
Right. I get that, I understand.
Exactly, I have said that, that like, well, maybe we need to get more laser-focused and do less action steps, but be more specific and concrete on what we're trying to accomplish. Get those accomplished, then move on to a new set, so that we're not overwhelming staff. 'Cause I can remember, even before Nathan, CED got loaded up with, CED and Public Works were the ones that were loaded up every year. Yeah.
They're good.
I mean, I think what you do with a strategic plan is you put together what your goals are, you put together what you want to achieve, and you look at those and say, okay, this goal, we can achieve this this year. So, this is, this is year one's goal. This goal, well, it's gonna take a little bit of time, so you slot that into year two. goal, well, it's going to take a little bit of time, so you slot that into year two, and you just go ahead and take those goals and determine, really, the low-hanging fruit, which ones you can do first. And then by the time you get to year five, or whatever the year is, you know, you're tackling some of those bigger ones that are going to take more time, more resources, more research to go ahead and get together. But I think that, that to me is how I've always run every business, any organization, is you put your goals, you list what all your action steps are, and then you prioritize them as to, okay, which ones are going to have to happen. There might be a real big one that has to happen in two years, because it's super important. And so you just move that ahead, and then take the other ones and adjust them. But, you know, I think that gives staff, that to me gives staff more guidance, because I know this year I'm working on this, this year I'm getting, next year I'm working on that. If this one needs a little bit more time, well, you know what? There might be something in year two that I can get done in year one, because I need a little bit more time to get this project taken care of.
I think a majority of these are obtainable and are specific. I mean, to me, and when you look at, at some of these, not, and I say, when you see all of them, and intimate and everything else, but a lot of them are, have conclusion dates, or some, something to, it is brought to a, a head. Now, we're not saying it's completed. The completion may be, bring it to study session. That's the completion. Okay? Doesn't mean it's implemented. It was researched, and here's the results of that research. And so a lot of these have that type of direction to them. So I don't think they're all ambiguous and open-ended, um-
No.
And, and a lot of them have some good meaning to them, and I think are good, are have been, are good practices for the cities to do or work with, whether it be collaboration with different organizations, like Quod City Arts, or whatever it is. G, they talked about the GIS, and the, throughout the community, and, and those type of things I think are very productive for the, the city to be researching and doing.
I, I guess I'm just, I'm, so what I'm proposing is that we have a clear-cut vision, and then within that vision, we have, if it's a year, one-year goal, we state it as a one-year goal with benchmarks, which helps staff-
Yes.
-focus on what needs to be done and what time.
Yes.
If it's a five-year goal, we have the five-year goal, and there were benchmarks still, so we can have that. We don't have that right now. We just have a list of action items without those, that structure in place. I guess that's what we're missing, the structure. We're missing the structure of how we want to really perceive our goals to not only the community, but to our staff who have to execute these goals.
Can I make an observation, or provide an example perhaps? The first action step, rental inspection program. Right? We have a very specific action step here of that. We want to explore outsourcing, or collaboration, or whatever, with respect to our rental inspection program. But what's not articulated in this, well, what's inferred in this is that the city of Rock Island cares about housing. Otherwise, why on earth would we have, why would we have a rental inspection program? And why would we care to improve the rental inspection program? Right? But that sort of, the, the, the bigger goal of housing is inferred in this specific action step. And really, the city does have a number of plans on the books about housing. We have the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing, we have different housing plans, things like that, the neighborhood plans, which probably, if you go through all those dusty plans, it says that the city should improve its rental inspection program to address, you know, urban blight, or whatever. And I don't, I, I'm making an observation here, right? I think that, Moses, you're making very good points, that, and we all, those of us who have been on here for a while, we know that we have tons of community plans on the city's website, but those never guide our goal-setting process. We never refer to them. We never, I mean, even those plans, like the downtown re-divi, revitalization plan, has specific benchmarks and timelines at the end of that big old document to say, who's in charge of this? Who, you know, whatever, duh, duh, duh. I mean, that's a plan, right? But when the council has our annual goal-setting session, where we articulate to the staff, this is what you need to focus on, that just sits over there, right? And so perhaps it would benefit us to refer to the plans that we have already adopted, and say, okay, let's check off some of these boxes before we continue running off and doing other plans. I would add that I have observed, similar to kind of what you were saying, Jenny, about when you first get on council, or at least what I experienced, is very specific, like project-based goals. I wanted, well, we all want to fix all the streets, but, you know, take some really, take some really silly, minute thing. I think it would be cool to bring back the, the Looney History bus tours in Rock Island, right? That's all about, whatever, that's a very niche thing. Okay? Fine. Um, that was one of, not my highest goal, but it was one of my goals. Then after realizing, we don't have the capacity to bring back the Looney Bus Tours, then you start thinking, oh, we need to figure out how to increase our capacity. And this is similar to the conversation that we had about the downtown last year, right? We all know that there needs to be improvements with the downtown. And we can sit here and say, staff, you need to pick up, and you need to do all the weeding, you need to blah, blah, blah. But the reality is, we just don't have any capacity, so we have to think creatively and figure out, hey, maybe if we hire the chamber to create a new downtown place management organization, that increases our capacity, so that, that maybe somebody can someday bring back the Looney Bus Tours, right? So, I mean, that's sort of the, uh, the goal. I, I'm making a few observations about how we have plans on the books, but we don't refer to them when coming up with our plans. And the difference between like specific project-based plans, and sort of broader organizational structure, goals. And I don't think we ever really talk about those organizational structure goals as council. We always just say, these specific projects, we need to get these done, while nobody's thinking about, is there a, is there a way that we can reform the entire enterprise so that it operates better? I mean, who is, who's in charge of just reviewing operations within the city to identify efficiencies? I mean, I know each department director or whatever, kind, you know, we, they do, they do that, but at an enterprise level, who is in charge of really figuring out, I mean, why did it take me as a council member to say, hey, maybe we should talk to RME, or whatever, right? Like, I mean, that's a very specific example. But maybe we should invest in having somebody that just looks at operations system-wide, and it's their job to make sure that things are done as efficiently as possible.
Sounds like an action step, uh, coming up with the next plan.
It is. It is. But there's different types of goals.
Yes.
Well, I know me as, I'm new, of course. You, everyone realizes that. I haven't came in with a mission to only think about First Ward or my own agenda. My comments, my statements, my questions have been about how we are running our process as a city as a whole. The goals is a citywide thing. Communication is a citywide thing. The budget is a citywide thing. That's the focus. So if I'm coming in, I'm going to keep using the business as an example. I will even use my youth group as an example. I have a goal, set of goals that my kids understand before they come to us. And then they're taught on those goals. So if I'm a new councilman coming in, if I know their specific goal that the city's trying to reach, no matter what I come with fixing every street, or fixing every, you know, pothole in the First Ward, it has to align with that vision and the goal that the city has already in place. It's adopted, it's moving forward, because I'm seeing the action steps of it being completed, year after year, day after day, whatever. It's a clear-cut communication chain. So when people are coming in, then they're not bombarded with, hey, I want to fix every street, even though that doesn't line up with everything else we have agreed upon. That's, that's what I'm trying to accomplish. We got to change this, this process. It's not working.
Can I make a recommendation, maybe, and see, just throwing this out, is that today is not the time to change the process. I think that we need to take a look, you know, when we, when we, on how we want to change it, and do that, and when it comes time for goal-setting.
Right.
I think it's the time. My personal opinion.
And that's why I didn't want to-
Yeah.
I don't want to have people keep coming up and give us updates, when I wanted them have a clear understanding of why I wanted a special meeting to understand goals. This is, this is why.
Right. And, and I understand. So my recommendation, just throwing it out, is that we continue for this fiscal year, to go down the path that we're at. And when we plan for next year, we do our strategic planning, our str, goal-setting, strategic plan, whatever you want to call it, and that's when we take a look at, what process do we want to do, or have, because you're writing English here. Uh, and, and, and how do we want to go about that? Is it hiring somebody, a mediator? Is it a consultant? Is it, uh, joining ourselves? But that format, along with the structure of these. If we want to review that, that's fine. I think that's the proper time and place to do that, for then setting the goals and obs, and steps and everything else for 2022.
With our next goal-setting?
October 19th.
Well, we can, I mean, we, I, I wouldn't have a problem moving our goal-setting up to like August, September timeframe.
Yeah.
Because I think if we did it like in August or September, and I also think, I mean, our five-year plan ends in 2022. I don't think it's unrealistic to start now, looking at strategically, how do we want to change our five-year plan, um, so that, so that we, so that it's not one of these things that we're doing all at one time at the last minute, but, um-
I'd like to see us align that. We have a three-year deployment of the 1.8 trillion, so of that 27 million coming to city of Rock Island. That's a three-year deployment. If we're going to be coming to the end of our five-year plan, why don't we kind of rope these things together and have one plan? We have three years to plan the COVID, or the American Rescue Plan money. We're talking about a strategic plan of a five-year. Should we just start, like Moses is saying, just start with the process? We're going to have to talk about how we're going to deploy 27 million over the next three years.
And that's a key part of what we're going to be doing for the next-
What's the vision of how we're going to deploy this money?
Right. So that's what I'm saying, is that come, whether it be August, September, or a type deal, that we, we sit down and, and, and start working this, uh, and talking about it. But we've got to have a common understanding of how we're going to approach it, because once again, we had the Lyle, the consultant, and that didn't go over very well, or at least people didn't seem to, whether they lost the attention span, whether they was too boring, I don't know what. Uh, but some of that groundwork, it is, it's like, true, this, remembered some cliches that, or thoughts of wisdom that Lyle gave, it's worth some, something. Or do we have by-state facilitated again, and what kind of format do we want? We start working on that now, so then in come August, September, whenever we set this date, uh, we can have some productive time.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense? But I don't think we want to take and throw what has been done by staff at this point, and was continuing to be done, that we want to throw that out. I think we need to continue to go down that path, my personal opinion, for the remaining part of 2021. Um-
And I hope it didn't come off as that. That's not what I was saying. I wasn't saying, you know, I know they, they've done excellent work up to this point with what we have given them, and I commend them on doing this with what we have been giving them. But I agree with you. We can, we can't just change everything right now. So again, that was the, the basis of us coming together tonight, to talk about just by that. Let's get together and get a plan, so we can figure out how we're going to do this moving forward. We, we have what we have in place. We can't do anything with it at this point, but we can have that discussion and strategize of how we can structure our goal, while in the same point, creating a vision, so we can have our goals tie into one another. Or if we have it, so we can at least get that, so I can see what the vision is.
And I think what would be good is if, if we have our, can have our vision statement, so we can all look at it ahead of this meeting. Um, I don't know if it would be beneficial to pull the last, since 17, to pull the last couple of years of the action steps, so we can see what has been done, what hasn't been done. And I think that's a good, a good measure of, are we suc, are we successful? Which I think we are, because-
I think so.
Every year, everything gets done. Um, but then we can kind of see what we have done, what our vision is. We can refine our vision.
Yeah.
Um, get, I don't know Lyle, but from what I heard of him, we could get a quality, um, strategic-
Well, like, get a dashboard.
Get somebody, somebody in that can, can pull together a, a strategic discussion and a plan over one weekend, instead of two weekends, because I've been in so many of them, that you can do them in a day and a half. Um, and then, and then really have somebody that knows how to do that, to kind of focus and structure. And I don't know if there's strategic planners out there for municipalities, because I know that there is a difference between municipalities and businesses, and the way they operate and metrics are.
That's what Lyle was, but, well, if we find somebody else, I'm not saying there's not somebody else, but-
Yeah. And so Lyle, Lyle did it, but Lyle, basically what you see here is very similar to what you got from Lyle, just in a different format. The city, for a while, tried a different group. They weren't satisfied with that group. But there was certainly, I mean, my recommendation would be to RFQ, to find an organization to come here, and then, then you would pick that organization, and we'd hire them to do this. That's what you're looking for, is someone to come in and-
Oh.
And guide you, I think.
Oh, I think that makes, that helps.
And I agree with that. But to get to that point of issuing the RFQ, we've got to figure out exactly what it is we're looking for, and what we want to have accomplished. What's the end goal of what we'll finally-
Yeah.
Be satisfied with.
I would agree. I, I'm hesitant to wait to have this conversation until a month before a goal-setting session, because then we're just going to have this same conversation, right? I mean, uh, I, I think it would be beneficial to sort of take a minute to draw out the inferred goals of a lot of these action steps. And, okay, does the city care about housing? And it might not be as obvious. I think the city should care about housing, but I'm one of eight of us, right? And so maybe we should have consensus about the broad goals. Do we care about children's development? You know, do we care about whatever? Or at least not, maybe not, do we care about it, but do we think that that's something that the city should do? Obviously, we all care about children's development, but-
He just left.
What's the role, what's the role of the city?
Yeah, what's the role of the- The city to make sure our kids are getting their after-school and summer learning provided for. What's the role of the city in that?
And I think too, along those lines, we need to look at, what, what do we view the city as, I mean, we are a service industry. There is no product here. It's a service, except our water. I guess it's kind of a product. Um, but so what are our, what are our services? What are those things that we feel are important to, like Alderman Robinson said, to have people come here, to have people stay here? Clearly, housing is one. Housing's going to be a huge issue, because our homeless situation's going to explode in August and September, and that's going to be a huge issue to address. So housing, fair housing, all of that's a good thing. Education, whether it's early childhood education, whether it's elementary, high school education, um, college, I mean, the whole gamut. Education is an important thing. I mean, I think that, you know, with Mr. Pappas here tonight, you know, you look at our vulnerable populations, you know, our youngest, our oldest, you know, those are populations that I think are important. Our middle class is really important. And look at those things that, that our citizens want and need to stay here, and what will attract people here. And I think we need to kind of look at those, and maybe, I mean, financially sound city, that should be a given. I mean, if we're not going to be financially sound, then we really shouldn't be a city. Um, but you know, just, but kind of look at, at those, those areas. And I know that was probably yours, but you were only here for a couple weeks.
Financially sound? No. All right. We can pitch that. That's obvious. I mean, we can't legally go bankrupt, so, you know.
We benefit from tonight, because I know we have staff on call. They're waiting to give their presentations, and I just don't want to, you know, I, I want to be cautious of their time. Are we still going to have them come up and give presentations, or are we going to go in a different direction?
Yeah. What do you want, Randy?
Typically, staff, besides me, are not involved in the goal-setting. So the directors don't come in front of you. But I was specifically asked tonight to have directors come and give updates. So I guess I'd like to hear from the council, whether, I mean, they're just going to tell you what these updates are.
In my, in my opinion, I say, we've, we have the information outlined. We know what, basically, they're just going to come and read what's on here. We know what's updated now. I'd say we continue on with what we have and work towards the next.
I was the one that, I was the one that requested specifically that staff be here. So if you'd like for them to report, I'm willing to stay here as long as we need to. But I've read their reports too. But like, just like you said, we did request that. Judith, you did too. You backed me up in the email, saying we want staff here and present to report. Normally, directors don't come.
However, if council doesn't want that, I guess I'm satisfied to-
Well, I do. I'm only one voice, so I'm just letting everyone know that I stated to ask for-
What is the benefit, though, if they're going to come up and report the same stuff that's here?
For us to ask questions, if we have questions.
I mean, we set this meeting up, and I asked staff to be here. So if we would like them to be here, that's fine. I'm just honoring what Randy just asked of us.
But besides reporting on what's already written here, some staff may have suggestions for council, like, okay, this specific goal, or, or action step, what do you really mean? Or, that's not really feasible for us to accomplish, you know? Or, how did you think we were going to accomplish this? So I think we need to honestly hear from staff, if, if there's anything that they think we're off base on, you know, to tell us that.
That's why we have a meeting tonight.
We lost that a while back, COVID. And I'm being facetious and funny, so.
They want to know if this goal is achievable. Is it achievable in the time specific?
Because maybe we didn't give benchmarks, or it was too vague, or it's not, sometimes you come up with goals that just aren't, you can't accomplish them. You're just pie in the sky.
I think it would be helpful, and maybe this is part of the conversation about process, but it works well when we come up with a goal, or it works better, at least. When we come up with a goal and then staff has an, I, I do this in my day job. My boss says, we're going to do this. And I say, okay, do you mean this? Do you mean that? No? Okay. What do you mean? Oh, oh, you mean this. Okay, I can do that, right? And we don't ever have that part, I feel, of the goal-setting session where, I mean, Randy, you, you send out sort of what's been outlined here, and then we can email you individually, but as a group, we, we don't ever have that opportunity to take. I'll give a, a personal example. I recently had a conversation with a staff member about action step one, outsourcing-related strategies for city services slash programming through service agreements. And, you know, I, I largely put this idea forward. I mean, I know they got seven votes. It was agreed by, but, you know, that's like my language that I use specifically. And in talking to the city staffer, I realized like, well, I wasn't necessarily really talking about outsourcing. I was talking about collaborating with other entities, right? And so in that discourse, I was able to refine, like, yeah, I mean, like, these examples of what we got going on here, working with RME is like exactly, exactly what I wanted to have come out of that goal. Not lay off all the Parks guys and just hire RME to do it, or whatever. But there was never really an opportunity to have that sort of
Finesse it.
Finessing, thank you, to figure out what exactly we're meaning by this. So I don't, I mean.
I think it would be beneficial at goal-setting to have department directors there for that very reason, because we can come up with a goal, but we don't implement it. I mean, it's kind of like we come up with the policy, we come up with the ideas, but we don't implement it. So we don't really know, one, can it be done? Is it feasible, affordable, to be able to do it? And is it something, as I was going back to the one to five year, is it something that can be accomplished in one year? Is it going to take maybe three years to do it? And when you look at what is important and what really needs to be done, our staff deal with that every, I don't deal with that every day. I, I have my own issues I deal with, but staff deal with that every day. So staff is going to be able to know pretty instantly if it's a realistic thing to accomplish or not. And I think having them is, is probably going to help us drill down and be a little bit more specific and direct on what our goals are going to be, because we're going to have input on, is it an achievable goal? Is it a measurable goal? And, and is it a goal that's going to be one, two, or five years out to be able to do?
In, in 2017, I don't know if you remember, but when Lyle, the last year Lyle did it, staff was more involved in the process.
He had a separate meeting, I think.
He had a separate meeting. So the morning was staff, met with staff to discuss their issues. Then there was a lunch, and then the council came in in the afternoon, and then part of the day on Saturday, depending on how much time we needed. The reason it went to two days last time, or two weekends, was because there was a number of aldermen that were new, and there just wasn't time to get it done. That's really why it was.
Being new is very difficult to get a comprehensive, I don't care how you scored this.
Because it was probably what, in June?
I agree.
Last week providing strategic planning.
It's tough.
It was a bad time.
Was he really?
All right.
Was here last night. He's still providing services locally.
Yeah, but we'll do an RFQ.
He does that in Dorf, too.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do RFQ and, and try to work on getting the word, verbiage of that down.
Well, will we? I mean, that was an idea. We, no one decided to do an RFQ tonight, did we? Is that what we're going to do?
No, and I raised the issue. We, we have to have that discussion of what should go into it. What are we looking for? What are we trying to accomplish?
Can we have, can we have the city manager draft one and pass it around and see if people want it as a jumping off point?
Well, he hasn't even heard our ideas or anything.
We just, just brought it up and around robin right now.
Well, isn't that kind of what the strategic plan is for? Would we do the strategic planning to bring out those ideas on what you want? I mean, I don't think you send out an RFQ saying, I want you to come in and help me do this, 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 and this, because this is my plan. You send out an RFQ that we would like someone to help us do strategic planning and help us shape a five, 10, 15-year plan for the council. And then after the strategic planning, you determine that.
Yeah. I agree with that. But I'm saying the processes, we've tried how many different ways to do goal-setting and strategic planning, and we've not been happy with any of them or the results or the process. So I'm saying, I think we need to do a little bit more thinking about the process to identify what it is we're looking for, if we're going to do an RFQ, if we're going to do an RFQ.
Well, I can, I can ask our audience member Kelly out here, because Kelly and I have worked together on a lot of stuff. I mean, I think in the Quad Cities, there have been a number of organizations and businesses who have done pretty intense and successful strategic planning with local people. And I, you know, and I think they've, I mean, the organizations I've been involved with as a strategic planning have been phenomenal, right on point, and everybody's been very happy, you know?
A strategic plan and goal-setting is not, I'll call it rocket science. It's done all the time by a number of people.
Kelly and I have been doing philanthropy together for eight years. I understand that too.
And, and so I think that, you know, it's, it's, it could be, you know, it's, it's tedious. It's time-consuming. There's a lot of, of wordsmithing going along with it to get everybody, but it is done. Vision statements are done with it. At the same time, a lot of times, vision statements are done at that time. I'm not saying we do that or not. We have to take a look at that and, and make the decide. But so, you know.
Yeah, Randy, can you, can you send us a draft? And then Judith, what we can do is from that draft, we can throw our ideas and then fine-tune it. And then as a council, we vote on how we want to proceed. That should give us an indication of how we want to proceed. But at least it would start with a draft from Randy. He can get it out to us. If we don't like it, we can chop it up, add our, you know, whatever we need to add in there, send it, send it back out to everybody. We need to have another meeting to discuss it and open. We can do that. And that's, that's how we can at least move forward with that next step.
Yeah. If anyone has specific ideas to include in that initial draft, feel free to send it to Randy. And then he can send it out to all of us, and we can provide feedback, and we'll whittle it down to something for us to agree on.
Sounds good.
Okay. Now, working on procedures, and I think that, once again, I think the, the directors have spent some time researching, updating. I think we should let them express their, the updates. If we have some questions on it, and I think that's fair to ask those questions, and, and continue to move forward. Can I ask at this point with this, there's really no votes. We, we talked about a motion and, and all of these things on each one of them. We're not voting on each one to accept it now. We've already accepted it. We've got them. So can we dispense with the parliamentary procedures and just get the updates and questions? Is that okay, Mr.?
I think we're still going to have to go through the parliamentary procedures, but I think that we have some folks, I think Dylan probably and Dave in the past have made motions where you can, you could truncate it, so I don't know that you have to go through the discussion with all of them necessarily. But I do think we still need to follow the Roberts rules of order, because that's, those are the rules.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to, just trying to simplify things a little bit.
So there was a request to not do that, not do them all in bulk and look at them on a smaller scale. So I guess I would.
That's fine. And we can't deviate from the published agenda according to the Open Meetings Act.
All right, all right.
I didn't fight the rules.
I know. I know. I'd say, I'd say it's fine. We'll move forward. I've just.
Randy's our OMA officer. Blame him.
All right.
Exactly.
We have. Mr. John Gripp wants to give an update.
I do. Thank you. Part of action step one for the Parks Department of the outsourcing, the collaboration and partnerships. RME is under new leadership, and we have built a relationship, and we will see some shows this summer at Shrewsbury Park in collaboration with RME. The first show is going to be August 7. It's going to be the All Sweat Productions and more performing Abbey Road, so that'll be a good one. And then we're going to lock down a date in September to have a second one. So we'll start out with at least two this year, and next year, we'll continue to build upon that. So that's my portion of this. Just some comments I would have about, real quick, super quick, about a strategic plan. We do have one for the Parks Department. And everything starts with the council goals. That's where we start. We want to make sure we aim all of our five-year strategic plan to, to at least go in the direction of the guidance of the council and their goals. And the way that we did that is we started a self-inventory customer surveys, questionnaires, and focus groups. And my only recommendation would be, that's where, if I were you folks, I would start with your constituents. Get information from them versus personal things you hear on the flood of emails you get, or the, the vocal minority of, of people within your, your wards. That's, we found a lot of good information doing that. It did take some time and effort, but a lot of good things came out of it.
Find any tools of how you could inform us as a, as a ward alderman, how I can get my ward constituents to actually get me some information? Because we're providing no tools of how to communicate with our constituents, other than here's a Google Drive.
Well, what we used.
Constant contact or something?
No, we did focus groups. I identified key players that utilized our facilities and our programs and, and special events. Did questionnaires. We sent out to people that are all throughout Rock Island. We did customer surveys, and I think that would be something similar like ward meetings. Get in together. You can't complain if you don't participate. That's kind of our rule. You're part of the solution, or you're part of the problem. And, and we've, a lot of people have really stepped up, and we work together with the community very well.
Hey, John, the survey that we have, or the study that we have, it's by Ballard, I can't remember.
Ballard King.
Do they do that just for parks, or is it for, on the city level too, we can probably bring them in to do that same kind of work?
Um, I'm sure you could.
Because they did an excellent job, and I don't mean to cut you off. They did an excellent job with identifying what our strong suits are, what, you know, what our, what areas we need to work on. And it wasn't just parks. It was the entire, it was everything.
That's correct. Ballard King is park and rec-specific, but I know they have divisions that would look at cities.
John, can we just hire your consultant, please?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Good answer.
John, I, wait, I had a less joking question. So when Parks and Rec decided to pursue that surveys, roundtables, whatever else you listed, before initiating all of that, did you or a consultant sit down and come up with the plan of like, this is what we're going to do? Here's the schedule. Who's in charge of scheduling when the roundtables are? I mean, did you plan all that out before you initiated it?
Yes. Ballard King brought us very good information. Some of it was tough. It's tough to look at yourself at certain times, but we definitely came out of that bigger and better. We came up with the timelines. We came up with the strategic groups within that. We did our own roundtable discussions, much like a, a ward meeting style. We got a lot of negative feedback and positive feedback, but that's how we started to build those relationships. If you want to be a part of the solution, here we are. If you don't, if you're just complaining, then thanks. I'm dealing with these people right now.
How long ago was that?
It was 2016 when I, when I started. And we were doing the same thing kind of that we're hearing now. It's not negative at all to how we worked before. It's just we were kind of throwing stuff against the wall, seeing what sticks based on what's up there, and it's anxiety up here. So we need to bring it down with a plan that we could follow and track on an annual basis, and that's what we've done. Are we able to, to check everything off the list annually? No. It's a living document that, based on every year's success or challenges, we, we mold and modify and keep going. Yes, it's a five-year plan, but we don't lay it out for five years, and I don't look at that until year four. It's a progression to get to those larger goals along the way. But, thank you.
I'm going to be emailing you about your consultant.
Okay. There's not enough money in the world.
American Water, and we've been looking at that for a year and a half, two years now. Staff's provided them a lot of information. At this point, it's up to them to come back to us, which they planned to do in June, and talk with aldermen individually, and then at some point, move forward and have a, a public meeting. So that's the status there. They call me every few weeks just to get an update.
When you say public meeting, what exactly do you mean?
Study session or?
A study session.
Oh, okay.
Which is public televised?
And the intent of the study session is just to basically have them make their presentation about their offer, so the public can see it.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't. You wouldn't see an actual offer on there, because they can't give away a number. But what they would talk to you about is what they see are the advantages of privatizing and some things they found during their investigations that would, I guess, lend some credence to their proposal. That's what you're going to see during the study session.
Are they the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I met with them Friday. Was it only Friday? And they gave us the, the timeline. They had some interesting points, but from conversations with residents, I put it back on American Water. I'm like, you have to go out and educate the public and sell them on this. And whether that means you have to do ward meetings in every single ward or do multiple public meetings, whatever you need to do, you need to do that. And then I still, I had brought this out in the campaign, and I'm still in favor of this. I think every account holder deserves a vote on this issue, because this is a momentous decision that's going to impact the city for generations to come. People want to have a say in whether or not we sell the water and sewer.
Okay.
The one thing, though, if I may, and I've, I've done some calling around, not just in Illinois, but in Indiana and Iowa, talking to stakeholders of American Water. And I can present something for council if you so desire, but not only do I want to hear the positive things, I want to hear the negative things from, from the actual stakeholders, the clients, and, you know, let, and then give American Water a chance to rebut, you know, to, to state their case. If there was a negative comment made, then to, you know, what did they do to mitigate the, the, the issue? And I think you'll be quite surprised.
Okay. I would like to keep working on the, talking about the goals versus we're digging into the details here that we would talk about at that study session.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
I thought that's what we were supposed to do. No?
Updating on where we stand with these goals. That's fine. Next.
All right, John Thorson. Okay. Well, one of the things HR was tasked with was updating or adopting an injury/illness prevention program. What we're doing here is updating the safety manual here and a lot of our related policies. We have a lot of policies here. We just need to do a little bit better consolidation of them here. And we're also updating our city personnel roles here too. So Chris Castleine, who's our risk manager, will be doing this and has been preparing the presentation. He'll be here in June, so to talk further about this. Hopefully we're in the right direction. I'm sure you'll let us know if we're not. So it's a quick overview.
Easy, easy.
Questions? All right, chief. Action step three, the social worker liaison.
I would add some of what John Gripp said here earlier, that our goals within the police department, individual and supervisory, they're aligned with the council goals. It's appropriate within the individual assignments within the police department. So with regards to the creation of the social worker liaison, actually, we've aligned this goal to meet with what we feel the police department's actual needs are, and that's mental health services. We have a good partnership with Family Resources. They serve a very beneficial purpose, so we continue to partner with them for those specific services that they provide. However, their services do not extend into on-scene crisis intervention. So for the past several months, my colleagues with the Illinois Law Enforcement Group, we've been having discussions with representatives of Unity Point, Robert Young Center. Also includes some discussion with the Rock Island County 708 Mental Health Board, and that's regarding a proposed pilot program for a co-responder model for crisis response. And that's the direction that we're headed with that.
So with this, will the, the social worker be on call? That will, if like an officer is on the call and they, they notice this situation, would they then call their on-call or something like that?
Well, that, that's the, the concept, that there would be a co-responder model or potentially embedded within the police departments, the various police departments to respond, but it would be a 24/7 service.
Chief, with regard to this program, is there a date? I mean, when, when can we expect this report back? When can council expect to have something on that? With both in regard to the, how, how reasonable is this program to, to implement, and how much is it going to cost us?
I think there's momentum for it. There's definitely support for it on both sides, and that's why we have these discussions. I guess what I'm I guess what I'm going to say is, we have to crawl before we run. It's going to take time, it's going to take money. That's where the sheriff has been having the discussion with the Rock Island County 708 Mental Health Board, to try and get some of those funds diverted to this program. Basically, as we've had these discussions, you know, one of the questions that comes up, is there adequate resources in place for mental health? Like, is there bed space, is that one of the issues? Well, it's clinicians, which are the actual issue, and having those clinicians available to come respond to those type of issues. But, you know, the whole goal concept behind this is a mobile crisis response, a partnership in that. And there, there will be a time in where things change, society changes, where we may have those professionals as part of staff. But though, that, I think that's down the road, we're a ways from that. But again, we are working towards it, and I think we've made some progress. I, I'm not prepared to give you a timeline saying six months, we're going to have something this, of this magnitude up and running, but we're definitely moving that direction.
Okay, well, at, at the very minimum, you can at least let us know that we are moving forward, or we've hit a wall and, and, and we have to go back and?
With anything, if there's going to be a wall to be hit, it's going to be funding.
Well, yeah, well, we have 27 million coming our way.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Now, would this incorporate any type of, of social work for, you know, say like, like the, you know, helping, helping fit? Like, if you're, if you have somebody pulled over in a car, and their wife and kids are with them, and they get taken to jail and stuff, I mean, would this also help?
Well, there's already mechanisms in place for that. Not necessarily social work, but there's other services that are provided for those type of needs.
Okay.
There's a whole gambit of different resources that we call on, depending on the given situation. You know, if it's placement, whether it's DCFS, you know, whether court services, whoever it may be. There's a number of ABC agencies that help us out, I guess.
Are we the only department in the area looking at this?
No, this is the Quad City Law Enforcement Group, which is comprised of the sheriff, the chiefs of police from Silva, Cease Moline, Mylan, myself, and Moline. I think I got everybody named there.
What's the status with Davenport's? I mean, Davenport already implements this, correct?
Yep, so they're, they, and I think Family Resources plays a little bit different role over there as an Iowa-based agency than what they do in Illinois. I have talked with their staff over there, and, and it's, it's fostered a more direct services as far as referrals to victims, and kind of got some names with faces, that type of thing. But it's not an on-scene response.
Sure.
They're not actually going out and responding to true issues. What we really deal with is that mental health crisis. I mean, that, that fosters into homelessness, vagrancy, things of that nature, which,
Right.
you know, not really in our realm per se, but we're dealing with, but we need that other component to help us.
Yeah.
Do you think COVID has extenuated the issue?
Certainly.
So like, there's even more demand to deploy these resources that you need to help?
Certainly.
The clog is just getting bigger and bigger.
It is. The, I'm, you know, this is a crisis that has been building for a long time prior to COVID, and COVID has exasperated it.
Be like one big shot to help turn it around.
Well, I mean, on that, on that line, you know, I mean, this body is the body that determines the funding for things. So if, if we can move on this, and, and you say funding is going to be the biggest thing, if funding is the biggest thing that's holding it up, we need to know that so that we can make some decisions as to whether that is something that we want to prioritize. So I would encourage you to?
Sure, somebody will let you know.
I mean, I'm not joking about, we have 27 million, we have 27 million.
You have 26.
Now's the time to start, 26, now's, I'm a funder, I always round up.
And million can make a difference.
And perhaps I wouldn't suggest that that is, that is a wider discussion for representatives of this body to have with their counterparts in other municipalities to try and pool maybe some more resources, so the burden is being shared by many, and it extends the funding for something like this. Because it, this is what, this is what law enforcement needs. They need mental health workers to respond to these type of crises. We are not equipped to deal with these issues, but we deal with society's issues, and, and we need that assistance. But that assistance is obviously going to come with some dollars behind it.
What is percentage of your calls are those type of cases?
I couldn't tell you. Just from a, just from a gut feeling, we deal with a lot of mental health issues.
Has this, has what's been being discussed within the Quad Cities Law Enforcement Group, has that been breached with the Bay State Regional Commission at all?
Not that I know of.
Is there any way that Randy or the mayor, as the, you know, as, you've seen?
That may have, that discussion may have happened, but I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm, what I'm connecting here is your insight about how that's, this is something that we should be discussing with our counterparts and other councils. The Bay State Regional Commission is an entity that facilitates that type of conversation. If that conversation's not happening at the Bay State Regional Commission, I think it should. So if, if we can bring it up, that would be great. On a second, maybe not a second, but whatever, on another note about this idea, I remember when I first was, when it was first brought to my attention, in addition to like a mobile crisis response, there was also the idea of having somebody, having somebody be able to respond to, you know, victims and trauma and all that good stuff. As you know, as we all know, victims are not always apt to talk to the police or things like that. And so maybe by working with a social worker, or whatever that person is, I don't know if social worker is the right term, that trauma or victim or whatever can be better managed, I guess. Is that a part of the conversation?
That's what fam, that, that's what Family Resources does.
Over in Davenport?
They're here.
They're doing it too?
They're also based in, in the Justice Center.
Okay.
And I believe they maybe have another office as well, but they're victim advocate services.
Yeah.
So their, victims are aligned with them through court, and maybe Dave can speak to that a little bit more.
I'll give the sponsor here on their board, correct?
Yeah, so one of the things that, like, that what they're doing in Davenport is they have a Family Resources staff member co-located at the police department, so that when victims come in, if they don't want to talk to the police, they can talk with the Family Resources advocate, and, and they can get information then that, that they could share that will help the police in the investigation. A lot of times, the victims are, are very traumatized.
Mm-hmm.
There are times when the victims don't want to talk because it may implicate them in other things that are going on. But that's one of the things that Family Resources does, is they try to work with the victims of violence, homicide, work with the families, because those things impact not only the person who caused it, but the victims and the whole family unit there. And I think when I, when I asked Family Resources about that, I think to embed a person, a co-locate a person at the police department, it's around $52,000 a year to have that person there. And then from there, that person can go ahead and handle all of the referrals, so that, that alleviates some of the stuff that the police, they don't have to deal with that, because that person will be with them.
How much did you say that was a year?
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two?
So is that, is that, oh, sorry, I was just going to clarify.
You're fine.
Is that what, what's happening at the Justice Center?
So, so they're available there. I, I'm not saying that co-locating in the Rock Island Police Department is yes or no. I don't know that it's of that significant a move if you're moving basically a block over to another building for that. I think they probably reach a wider range of people for Rock Island County by being located where they are and providing those services and getting better aligned through the court. This is why we have a partnership with them, though. We have a memorandum of understanding that we enter into, to, that is mutually beneficial. We refer victims to them, they provide training for us as well. So, I mean, it's a, there is a, there's a collaboration there. Whether it's a physical, we're in the same building, or, you know, we walk a block over and.
Chief, my question I have is, is, should there be an implementation of onsite Family Resource personnel? Would that require additional training to those individuals?
For?
If you're doing, when I'm talking about onsite, I'm talking about is?
Additional training for us or for the?
For the council, should they be going to the scene of domestic per se?
Yeah, I, that, that's a whole complex set of issues.
Correct, I wasn't sure.
Because it's whether they want their staff going to potentially volatile scenes. There's a risk. And this is one of the, I, I think the potential obstacles you run into, because of that very reason.
Right, okay.
Is that what's being discussed within the Quad City Law Enforcement Group right now? You know, like, identifying that as being an impediment to this idea and figuring out what we're going to do about that?
We haven't had specific discussions, I guess, per se on that, but we also recognize that regardless if we're in a co-responder model, whatever it may be, there's still the strong likelihood that police resources may be needed. And we recognize that and why we're there, serving, I guess, in a backup role, and they're taking a primary lead. We still may need to be there, not in all cases. Maybe it's a fire, ambulance response, that fire and ambulance is, is responding with, and it doesn't require police intervention, but we also recognize that it may. And so I, I guess that's one of the, there is no, you know, hey, somebody else is just going to show up and take care of everything. And we're still going to have to be involved.
Sure.
There is no compulsory mandates in the medical field, right? So the only compulsory individuals that are in the room would be police officers. So.
Thank you.
I mean, it certainly is a complex issue, and I'm glad to hear that it's being discussed amongst the law enforcement group. You know, it would be helpful for us as council members to just keep informed as to how that conversation is going, because obviously it is a topic of much attention in our community. And so just knowing, you know, like what Alderman Polis said, you know, what are some timelines here? And I mean, we know that there may not be one, but explaining that to our constituents would be helpful.
Okay. Yep, I'll try and provide updates to city manager, and he can pass them along as appropriate. We don't have, we don't talk about it every time we're meeting, but it comes up, and people are tasked with doing different aspects or meeting with other individuals, and so I will do what I can to pass it on.
Okay, and then regarding the co-location model for Rock Island Police Department, are we pursuing that at all, or is that just not something that we're interested in?
That, I don't know that that's just an answer to just move somebody into our building right now.
Okay.
I just, right now, I don't see where it, I'm not saying there's not a benefit, but I don't know that specifically just co-locating somebody in there is an answer to any specific issue that we're facing. I feel that the mental health aspect, from my standpoint and what I see out there and what the officers are dealing with, that I would like to see them, that service co-located. That would be a huge benefit for the police department, because we're always going to be dealing with that.
Right.
And, you know, and again, the model is a work in progress, but it, it has some legs.
Okay. Thank you.
And it might be beneficial just to talk to the folks that are at the, at the Justice Center to see if they would come and talk, you know, to council, let's say, a study session, to see what their thoughts would be on that too, if they thought there's a benefit, or if they thought that, you know, at least you have an idea then of how the process works.
Sure.
And that might not be a bad idea.
We have a council member who's on the board of Family Resources. The seventh ward has the CEO, Nicole Durbin, who lives in Rock Island in the seventh ward. She might have some thoughts on this too.
Sure.
It's also?
I'll reach out to her.
Yeah.
It's very easy for a constituent to say, well, Davenport PD is doing it, why aren't we? Right, and I don't have a good answer to that, so getting a better answer would be helpful.
You tailor your needs to each individual city. And while we work in collaboration and partnerships, we are, we all recognize that we are all each our own entity.
Right.
And our, my needs may be different than my neighbor's needs.
Right.
And that's just, you know, we look at what works for us, but we also look to those partnerships, you know, to help in something like this, because no one person can do it alone, and there's a potential benefit for everybody that's involved in it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I get that. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, chief. Last action step under goal one is solar power policy and program. Johnson Controls was tasked with identifying a company, and we, I've been working with that company for the past year. They've conducted site visits, they completed the last site visits in March. You can see on here the various locations that they've looked at. And last week, they were supposed to get information back from the finance company that they work with, and then putting that information together. So I would hope to have something by mid-June from them. They did look at 14 locations, one of them is there in red, the Southwest Whitewater Treatment Plant. That didn't look like, initially like it was going to be something that was appropriate. The funding just didn't make sense. And once they've done their, you know, their onsite visits and their drone flybys, it may be that some of these other ones drop out too. So we won't know till they, till they give us the information. And they would provide us information to either do a power purchase agreement, which is where someone else owns it and, and we're guaranteed a certain rate over the next 20 years or so. Or it may be that we would want to do it ourselves, so that information will be in there. How much the, a system would cost, and then what year do we see our payback after that? If the council was interested in putting some ARP money towards something like that. But we do hope to have something here pretty soon, because they've completed basically everything they can do now except for the final documentation. And then we can set them up to come in here and do the study session.
Okay.
Long time. Long time.
All right, so we've concluded one, we, I guess, to take a vote, we have to take a vote, don't we? We've got first and second?
Do we want to conclude? I mean, we don't necessarily have to limit conversation, this conversation to the specifics of the, I mean, we can, we can have conversation about all these things, and then we can vote at the end, if we want to. Otherwise, we can, I don't care, we can break.
Well, there was a request to break it up and vote in between on those, but we'll go with whatever council wants to do.
So we're voting on to keep them pretty much as is, basically?
That's, that was the motion.
Well, my motion was to consider.
Yeah.
I'm voting to consider.
Do I have to make, do I have to make a, a motion to amend it, to approve it as well?
You certainly could make it clearer, that would make it clearer.
Do we feel like we need to do that? Okay. Let it fly. Roll call.
Thank you.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Hurt?
Yes.
Alderman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Polis?
Aye.
And Geenan?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number eight.
Goal number two, expanding local economy.
Move to consider the action steps as I'm editing goal number two.
Second.
Number two, start discussion.
Right, so the first one, what we did was we diverted $100,000 from our hotel motel tax towards tourism this year. We were going to initially do the bulk of it, which was approximately $200,000, but due to budget cuts at the end, in order to not have a property tax increase, we reduced that to just $100,000. So I've been in contact with Quad City Convention, or Visit Quad Cities now is their name, and they gave a presentation back in April, and we're still working on that documentation and hope to bring that forward here in June. The start of their fiscal year is July 1st. So we are pretty close to an agreement on that. We're working on some other things in the background. We've been working on a local film office, that's one of the, the steps for us to look at. As I sent out an email to you earlier, we have contracted with Doug Miller to provide some film services, and he, working with Dari, have convinced Mike Halpin to allocate in the budget $50,000 to Rock Island to support a film office. So what Doug Miller is doing is he's doing the preliminary work to try to get that, be ready when we get that $50,000. And he's also doing some other work to bring some different film-related projects to the city of Rock Island. Any questions about that?
But the $100,000, the $100,000 that we put into this, this is for us. What are we, I guess, what are we doing with the $100,000?
We're given to Visit Quad Cities, and they're going to administer it for us, much like our, our group, our, our. We're given to Visit Quad Cities and they're going to administer it for us, much like our, our group, our, our, the, the agreement that we're gonna come forth with Quad City Arts. We give them the arts money and they manage our arts plan, basically. So rather than us trying to figure out tourism, we have no experts on staff, we've decided to contract and with, in this case, Visit Quad Cities. Similar to what we've done with DARI for economic development.
So how do we, how do we figure out if it's actually working for us? Or is there something that we, is there something we have in place that say you guys are not doing anything with the money that we?
We don't have the agreement yet, but in there would be, there'd be specific steps in there.
Okay.
And there are some projects that we're looking to fund, and I hope on the 14th to bring one of those projects forward. So you would see one of those that would take place pretty quick.
Sounds good.
And they're looking at establishing an office?
They are. So they have an office in Rock Island and a couple of years ago, or maybe last year during the pandemic, they shut it down and they're, they're looking to bring that back. And when they gave the presentation to us, it's gonna have some sort of theme related to Rock Island that will, will be decided. I think Alderman Parker's on that. They've asked him to be on that committee. John Grip is on there.
Who's to me?
Oh, I asked you about it. It's been a while now, so.
Well, you asked me, but not Visit Quad Cities.
Well, I did it for you. Anyway, so they have to have that office up and running. Originally, they had planned to the end of this month. I assume it will be sometime this summer. So they'll have a presence here in Rock Island.
Do we have any, any way to measure how successful this program is?
Well, that would be part of our agreement, is what would be in that agreement and how we measure that. There'd be some kind of work plan developed and we measure success off of that work plan, similar to what we've done with DARI.
Right, included, if, if you recall, or I don't remember when it was, but in our Economic Development Service Agreement with DARI, the agreement that we signed with DARI stated that within 40 days or whatever it was, DARI will come up with a work plan that, you know, the agreement has the broad things. They're gonna expand the local economy, right? Or whatever, the broad goals. And then that work plan is where DARI was tasked with chiseling out, okay, what do we mean by expanding local economy? We're gonna have X number of site visits. We're gonna, we're gonna measure employment statistics in the city or whatever.
Maybe a looney bus tour?
A looney bus tour, yeah. I think that's gonna be more Visit Quad Cities, but, you know, whatever.
Yeah, that would be the visit, would have something like that. So one of the things that's talked about is, you know, bring in an additional event to Rock Island every year. That would be one of their issues.
Well, yeah, and so the point that I brought up, the thing with DARI is that's the same model that we're pursuing with Visit Quad Cities. There's broad goals. I've sent a few to Randy, like, I don't remember. Anyway, broad goals, expanding the local economy within the tourism industry or something like that. But then Visit Quad Cities is gonna be tasked within 40 days of signing the agreement to come up with, okay, what does that mean? What, what are the benchmarks here that we're gonna hold you accountable to?
Okay.
All right, speaking of DARI, action step two is adopting a set aside percentage for development contracts. Give a quick update.
Hi, I'm Liz Tallman, and I was here about seven or eight weeks ago and gave you an update on our, quarterly update on our activities. And I just wanna take a moment for you newbies as well, just to explain the, there's a service agreement and it was adopted in, a year ago in March. And it outlines a relationship, a public-private partnership between the city and DARI. And then from that service agreement, we had to develop a work plan, and it's pretty specific. And what we did is we, we looked at the city council goals and your action steps. We also looked at the mission and DARI goals. And then we also looked at what was in that service agreement. So we tailored our work plan. Basically, it's our action items. What do we need to get done during that three-year agreement related to all of those things? And so our, our job is to come back and report to you regularly on, on what we're doing related to those categories. And the way we established our work plan was in eight areas. And, and again, looking at the goals and looking at the service agreement. And they're related on business resources, business development, business corridors, product development, housing promotion, financial assistance, marketing and communication and partnerships. And so what you're hearing and seeing and hear is just really a very small part of what that work plan is. And so, again, I'll be back in June and we will talk specifically about what we're doing in those particular areas. So just kinda wanted to give you a little, a little briefing on that. So as far as this incentive idea related to the arts and a set aside, what we're doing right now is we're coming, we're coming up with some ideas on what are some overall incentive programs that we would like to recommend to the council. And it's actually in another goal area as well. And so related to the art, we're gonna look at what other, some of the other communities are doing. But some places require, when you have a development agreement or the cost related to that, maybe you set aside a certain percentage funding or whatever it is related to the project for public art. And so that might be something that we might recommend to you in June, but, or July, excuse me. So what we wanna do is get really good information on overall incentives that would be good for the council to consider. And I wanna take a moment just to mention something that this last year, obviously with COVID, it's been all about recovery. And so all of our grants that, that we have at, at DARI and all of the money that the city received related to COVID response, we directed towards businesses related to emergency grants. And so it's been about $400,000, specifically the city money, but then we also help businesses with the, how to apply for the big grants with the, with the state of Illinois. How to, these webinars related to some of the federal programs, PPP and some of that. So it's been all about how to help our businesses get through this horrific pandemic. You know, I always kinda say it's like, we've been helping our businesses like it's a flood. We're helping getting them out of the river, right? So going forward in this next year, it's gonna be about how do we stabilize them and how do we help them grow? And so what we wanna do this summer is bring back ideas on not just COVID response and instability, but other things that can help our businesses grow. And so one of the things we were talking about before this meeting as it relates to, you know, the American, American recover, I can never keep track of all these acronyms, but, but that new money, you know, how can we help our businesses and what are some of the things that we can do overall? And thinking of some creative ways, you know, with some of that money. And hopefully, we can come bring it to the council and say, these are some of our recommendations that we think can be really some high-impact programs to help our businesses, not just today, but going forward and in terms of growth. So that's a long way of answering this, but we'll be back in July with an incentive, with an incentive package or proposals for you to consider.
Moses, I just forwarded you the work plan from DARI.
Okay.
If anyone else would like that, I can send it to you too.
Mike?
Sir? Do you, you have it?
No, I would like it.
Okay, I'll email it to you.
Mike, you wanna come up and talk about basically improving the city's image specifically, you know, weeds and sidewalks and that type of thing?
Yeah, so came to a study session in April and did a presentation on improving the image. So basically, what we've done so far to date is we focus on the downtown and our corridors with street sweeping, weed spraying. Our weed spraying contract has started in April. We've done some sidewalk and streetlight repairs. I don't know if you've been in the downtown, but I drove around downtown last night after the council meeting and I only noticed one or two lights out, which have been reported to municipal services. But the, the lighting, in my opinion, has improved greatly with the LED conversions. We're gaining on our lighting all throughout town, which was greatly enhances our, and improves our city image. Quite honestly, most of the repairs, or most of the concerns we're getting, and they're coming from Alderman Parker, are the brightness of our lights now. They want them turned down. They're too bright.
I can't help what my constituents complain about, okay? But that's true. They're complaining about it being too bright.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's, that's common with going from the, the old type of lighting to the new LED lighting. It does take some adjustment. And so again, like I touched in the presentation back in April, we're also doing things like, you'll see the flag installation go up this weekend for Memorial Day. Those are just sending that image out that we care of our downtown. We're promoting our holidays. They're focusing on our core services, again, right away maintenance, picking up the streets. We've, we've increased our street, street sweeping tremendously. We're, we're still working on the brick streets currently. And in this, on this PowerPoint, we did the internal goal of Public Works was fix it, clean it, or eliminate it. And we're, we're working hard to do that. Obviously, it all revolves around funding. You know, I think the biggest in, part to improve the image of Rock Island is our streets. You can drive around and, and it's not just Rock Island. That's any community. They, they all are struggling with fixing our streets. But if, if we could ask one thing, that would be to get the street funding that we need. That's the biggest, that's the first thing people see. That's the first thing they feel when they're driving around. That's the first thing they complain about. It's our number one problem, and I know you all know that. And so that would be our, our biggest ask would, would be to get the funding to improve those streets and sidewalks. Also included in the presentation was a, we talked about a mechanism for reporting streetlights, which I touched on, that we do have those in place currently. So that's really the update I have. We, we've done a lot of sidewalk repairs in the downtown. We're getting rid of the areas where there were trees. They've died or either have been removed. We're, we're filling those back in with exposed aggregate and eliminating trip hazards. Just that alone is, is making a big improvement. We're, we're down here pulling weeds every day. There's still weeds out here. We're spraying those. So, and that's, that's with our main corridor, it's not just the downtown too, so that's, that's what I have for you at this point in time.
How do we plan on addressing, cutting trees down and taking a little blow to the surface, but the roots are still there. The stump is still down there. So eventually, we gotta take that out to get new trees, to plant new trees, do we not?
Well, so that's a, kind of a bigger picture with the overall plan for the downtown. And, and I know, I'm not really the person to speak on that, and Miles has been very involved with that. But ultimately, when the plan is, is, is in, and that's again with the downtown, the new downtown partnership that we have. But when that plan is, is implemented, those trees won't go in the same place. And so it'll may, may even have a whole different type of planting area, a bigger area to allow those roots to grow. So right now, we're not even focusing on where the, if there's a stump left in or not. We're, we're eliminating the hazard and then focusing on the, the future improvements.
As far as street sweeping, so this is only happening in downtown?
It's not, no. It's happened all over. We've, we've made two, two passes in the entire city, the main corridors. We're now focusing on the brick streets because the brick streets collect a lot of debris from, you know, unlevel bricks. And then after that, we'll be moving into residential streets. Our hope is to get two passes of residential streets by the end of the year.
And I know I missed that. That's, a lot of residents, they, they love that to happen. You know, the street sweeper to come through, because it actually did clean up and it made it look a lot better than, you know, stuff just collecting. Unfortunately, some of them are not able to do it themselves, so, so they relied on that. And it did make a huge improvement, so I'm, I'm glad to see that coming back slowly, but.
And I would say in, in sometime in June, we should be finishing up our bricks and moving into the residential areas.
Sometimes the problem is cars parked in the street. They gotta go around.
That's what I was gonna say. Is there a way to like let certain streets know, oh, we're coming to do your?
Residential areas?
Yeah.
We, we could look at that. Just because we ask that doesn't mean it happens.
Right, oh, yeah.
But.
It's our job.
Well, and I'm from Chicago and they would regularly sweep the residential streets, but the signs would go up and then the PD would come through and tag or toe if you still weren't there.
And, and again, that's something.
They did, and then they would come through.
We've had, and I know Alderman Parker, we, we've had some conversations about, so we have the same issues with snow removal. And so we're looking at options there. We, we've sent out some surveys. I've got some responses back. I think the, the overall decision that Public Works will bring back to council in a study session format would be how we do that and, and when. Do we wanna do that on a citywide, broad look at that? Or do we want to, I know I'm getting off the goals here, but do we want to do that for a whole citywide? Or do we want to just focus on complaint requests only? So we'll, we'll be bringing back a recommendation for that.
I know, that's a great idea, because at least on my street, we, we hear when the plows come in, because we live by Thurgood Marshall, so when it's coming down Fifth Street, I'm knocking on doors, hey, move your car, move your car, because it just makes a huge mess when they try to go around. But I understand it's not, you don't have the time to knock on doors and tell people.
But that's our job.
But that would definitely help us if we knew in advance kinda what your schedule is and what the plan is, and then we can help with that by letting, you know, the residents know, hey, they're around this time, you know, just don't park on this side or this, something. To try to help with that process. That definitely.
We have a general idea of that. We have a snow plan and it talks about, you know, when we are expected to be done with residenzials and moving. It varies from storm to storm.
Right.
This, this past winter with the ice, it was like that all winter.
Right.
So, but yeah, no, we, we understand that.
You mentioned in your report Memorial Day. Are you putting up flags in downtown?
We will. We'll be putting up flags in, in the, American flags in the downtown.
Would it make sense, because we just passed our resolution last night about Pride Fest? I heard that Randy tweet said our pride flags are gonna be flying for the month of June.
So are they gonna, staff's gonna put up flags for this weekend and then come back next week and put up the pride flags? What we've done, Alderman Geenan, was we would, we would alternate the flags. We'd have an American flag, a pride flag, so we're not removing all the American flags. We would kinda alternate them.
So it's going up this weekend?
Mm-hmm, they'll go, the other, Memorial Day will be up before, on, before Friday or on Friday. And then the, the pride flags will be up on that Tuesday, June 1st.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then second part of there was promote positive marketing image of Rock Island. So DARI will talk about that a little later, about their marketing plan that's gonna be presented, I believe, is next month. And then Visit Quad Cities, part of what their task for is also marketing events and, and telling people, you know, come onto Rock Island and, and enjoy our festivities. So kind of a twofold on the marketing. All right, Nathan, you wanna talk about the institutional barriers, step four?
Sure. What we'd like to do with this item is, is bring you more information in August about what are the, what are the, the costs to do development in Rock Island? And compare those with our neighboring Quad City communities so that we can, each of those communities calculates building permit fees in different ways. And we'd like to share that information with you as well as a comparison of the building codes that our neighbors have adopted as well as ourselves and, and any other regulations surrounding development. And that will be an exercise where we may be able to identify some areas that may be impediments or, or may discourage people from developing here versus in other places. And so we'll be bringing you that information later this summer.
Great. All right. There's Liz.
Okay, succession planning. This has been, the discussion has been, you know, what happens when our businesses retire? And they don't have anybody leave their businesses in terms of family. What happens? They shut their doors and then if we're not aware of it, we weren't able to help them, you know, find some, some new owners, that type of thing. So as I understand the city council goal, our job is to come up with some ideas on what we can do to help identify resources and ways to identify people that might be able to help take over some of these businesses. So one of them, one of the ideas was a resource guide on how to start a business in Rock Island. And so that, that guide has been done and it's on our website and it's actually interactive. So someone can go in and figure out the steps and, and it's really through SBA and it's a great, great process. So one of the things we need to do, I don't think it's been done yet, but get that on the city's website as well and then hopefully have that kind of information available at the library. But it's a great, very easy, interactive, but then also at the end of the day, they can always contact us for direct help and then, and then our partners like with the Small Business Development Center. The other thing is, is the idea of having a workshop. I think that was one of the, the goals was, or action steps was to have a workshop on succession planning. We've been talking to our partners over at the Small Business Development Center. They just haven't had enough activity to do that. So they're really handling it more on one-on-one as they have businesses that approach them. But, so that's more of a reactive model. And so what we wanna do is actually figure out who, who out there is in a position, maybe they're gonna retire or what have you, that might be a potential, a, a potential company that we could work with. And so it's been kinda hard to figure it out because we don't know what we don't know. So we're gonna have to some, have some sort of process where we can engage them. So we thought of a couple of things. One, during the Business Connection meeting. One, during the Business Connection meetings that we have with companies, adding a couple of questions as it relates to succession. But two, with our new Forward Data Platform, we're actually able to survey businesses. And so we're gonna create a survey that talks a little bit about succession, and maybe get that out to our thousand businesses that are out there. And at least that can give us a data and understanding, are there potential companies out there that we can go work with? And then line them up with, you know, maybe there will be enough for a workshop after that. So that's related to the succession. Do you want me to talk about the next, the next one actually? Is marketing downtown now, the city has a contract with the Chamber actually related to downtown. So our marketing work is not just downtown, it's citywide. And so we hired a marketing specialist who started in January, and she has been tasked with putting together a marketing plan for the whole city. And so in next month, in June, we're coming back, we're gonna present the marketing plan to the council for your benefit. But a couple of other things, I'm just gonna go ahead, oops, can I do that? A lot of order, you know. So the marketing plan recommendations, and then we also have, I thought there was another one on...
There is number seven, the Zero Interest or Low Interest Loan Program.
Okay, now that, yeah, that's not market, okay. So anyway, as it relates to marketing, we have a person hired, she's been doing a lot of great work. We've had already a couple of campaigns, social media campaigns representing our businesses. She's updated our website, and then also our social media accounts. And then also has done the How to Start a Business Resource Guide, a housing guide that's also interactive. And then the business industry, or the business profile, which we have through Forward, we're gonna be marketing that come June as well. So marketing, we'll be back again to talk a little bit more on specifics. The Zero Interest Economic Revolving Loan Program, again, we're gonna come back in July, as I mentioned previously. We wanna come, present to you some ideas on what we think are gaps, or things that we can do possibly to help businesses post COVID, but then also in terms of growth. So hopefully coming together with not just a zero, you know, Zero Interest Economic Development Revolving Loan Program idea, but maybe some other things as well.
Liz, I have a question about the marketing one, sorry, I wasn't able to jump in time. So is Dari developing a marketing plan, like not necessarily, so you know, you gave the specific examples of, we're doing the social media campaign, and we're doing the brochure, or whatever it is?
Yes.
But is Morgan, is her name, right?
Yes.
Is Morgan tasked with sort of taking a step back and thinking through, okay, what are all the different communication channels out there? And, you know, what are we doing for people who aren't on Facebook or social media, right? Or what are we doing for people who don't speak English? I mean, is she thinking about any of that stuff as well, and sort of a holistic plan aspect?
We have...
And I know she's part-time, so I get...
Yeah, and so one thing though, honestly, like with the brochures, you know, like, so we have the Housing Resource Guide on our website, and the city will have that, you know, but how do we get that information out to people who don't have access to the website?
Right.
You know, should we put brochures or, you know, whatever in the library at city, you know, City Hall? So she's working on that. How do we problem solve some of those other channels, right, of communication? And also though, she's really looking more at like, how do we put together really campaigns? Or how do we celebrate Rock Island? And so one of the ideas that we're working on, and if you've been attending Dari the last few months, we've started this educational process of why Rock Island, and that's really leading to our campaign, you know, of, it's not gonna be just a month long, it will be, you know, a year, maybe two, of educating why Rock Island, both internally and externally, you know, how do we talk about that? So her job is really more about, I think, marketing in the sense of Rock Island. And, but I think those are good points. And again, we've had that question at our executive meeting, like how are we going to communicate to those that don't have social media, for example?
I think what United Way has taught us through this whole equity challenge is that it's more than just translating the materials to a different language, it's a whole different way that we package it and bring this out to a community about explaining what resources are available to you. It's, we tried to do that with our gardening program, we just translated signs and thought that would do it. And it wasn't, it's a whole cultural thing. So United Way has a great wealth of resources for staff members to look at things through an equity lens. We should utilize that.
That's excellent, thank you.
I know the, the Rock Island Housing Authority or Community Home Partners, whichever entity we wanna talk about here, they have a, they have a formal affirmative marketing plan on the books. I think they're required by law to have an affirmative marketing plan where they think through, obviously with the services that they provide, they have to make sure that it's available to everybody, and so they have to really take a minute to think through, okay, how exactly are we gonna make sure that people who don't speak English know about the services that Rock Island Housing Authority provides? And it's a whole affirmative. I didn't even know that the phrase affirmative marketing plan existed until recently. But anyway, the point is, and I think, I mean, we as a council, as a city, keep on coming up to this thing of, we don't have a communication plan. We, I mean, we sometimes do the work of communication, but we don't have a plan about it, so maybe there's an opportunity for us all.
And you know, and I've been thinking more of a marketing perspective, but communication, it's true, we need to figure out that piece of it as well. And I like the United Way idea and adding this into our marketing plan.
Something for us all to think about, I think.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So step six, action step seven. So that's the incentive program, and I think I've mentioned that about, you know, that we also wanna be adding in some recommendations, hopefully for the American, federal American...
ARPA.
ARPA.
Okay. And then action step eight, the study session on marketing plan in June.
Good job. All right. On this, if we're done with discussion, so we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Alderman Hurt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gilbert?
Aye.
Alderwoman Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Pulis?
Aye.
Alderman Ginnon?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Item number nine.
Goal number three, revitalization of strategic locations.
All right, Mike, you wanna come on up?
Well, we need a motion.
Oh, that's right.
Motion to consider the action steps in item and goal number three.
Second, move to second. Mike.
So I guess if there was one goal Public Works would think that you could consider removing, I guess it would be this one. And that's the fact that we already do this. And so, and I guess that could be said for a lot of these goals, but this is something we're always gonna do, even if you don't tell us to do it, or even if you tell us to do it, we're still gonna, or don't want us to do it, we still do it. And why wouldn't we, we wanna get free money, right? And so, anyway, with that, touching on the grants, we submitted in 2020 for 11th Street with the Rebuild Illinois Infrastructure Grant. We still have not heard from the state on this one. I know they did do an award of approximately $25 million, so it's probably not gonna be awarded to us. But again, we're still seeking additional grants. The second one that is mentioned there for 11th Street again is the Bustos Transportation. That was a ask of $10 million to totally fund that project from 31st to 45th Avenue. We submitted that on March 21st, and that's still pending per the authorization of the transportation bill. So that would award, would depend on the approval and the president's signature. Number three there that's mentioned, again, that's the transportation housing, that's pretty much the same as what I just mentioned about, that was another $10 million ask, and at this time, we still don't know when the award date would be, that's unknown. And the last one that I had mentioned there was the 11th Street with the Raze Grant. That has a deadline of July 12th. That was a $9 million ask with a 10% match, and the total cost is $10 million. So that's all I have on that.
Mike, I got a question for you. I was told that we are receiving some kind of funding of $150,000 towards sidewalks, ADA-type things on 11th Street in that area. Is that, was I misinformed on that, or is that something that you're aware of?
Who were you told that by? I guess I'm not, I'm not, it's not ringing a bell as far as specific funding for sidewalks. We have, you know, through our pavement patching program with the local gas tax, we apply a certain dollar amount for sidewalks in general throughout the city. And we work off of our sidewalk requests that would come in from residents. But specific for 11th Street, there was a project done years before I got here that was an ADA accessibility upgrade that was mandated, I believe, by the state of Illinois.
How long ago was that?
Randy, if you could help me out?
Oh, maybe 10 years ago. Now, we still have the section right next to the Watchtower site to do. We didn't do that section because of proposed development there, and we don't know where, you know, the egress and ingress are gonna be. Now, there may be some money out there we haven't officially been notified for, I think.
Okay, that's why I'm not...
I think you talked to someone at IDOT.
Yeah, that's why I'm not gonna bring that up, but we can have that discussion later.
Maybe a proposal that hasn't been officially approved, so we haven't been notified.
Yep, thank you.
How did we decide to go south? So that's 31st Avenue going to 45th South, right?
That's correct.
How was that selected?
Well, honestly, it's the water main below that is the worst area for us. That's where we experienced the most water main breaks, the Watchtower Plaza with, you know, the development proposed there at the time and still active. That would be the best area for improving.
So killing two birds with one stone.
It also contains, at least some of the grants contain the retaining walls on the east side, so if you drive down there, there's a variety of...
Residents.
Good retaining walls, bad retaining walls, no retaining walls, and the sidewalk isn't passable on that side, and...
I seen the fight.
Yeah, what we'd like to do is go in and with a uniform retaining wall all the way down. So when you drive in that corridor, it looks nice.
Our original submittal, back in 2020, we did a schematic of bike lane on both sides, kind of narrowing up the street, having a, we call it suicide turn lane, internal turn lane, left, right, in the middle. We've submitted that with IDOT, they were okay with that plan, so the street would actually be minimized to one lane each way.
Good.
That's the, that's the proposal at this time.
With a turn lane in the middle, right?
Correct.
Are we gonna repave 11th Street north of 31st at any point?
Well, as you know, it's not our street.
North of 18th Avenue would be good.
So, you know, we're doing all these improvements, or proposing all these improvements when it's still not even our street technically. So, but no, I mean, the whole, the whole area needs it, really. It's getting bad from 7th Avenue down to 45th at this point in time. You know, we do have conversations with IDOT, you know, and a couple of years ago, when 15th Street here and 92 was done, I had called them and asked, you know, look, this is getting down to bare gravel, we need to do something. And we actually did the engineering for them, and they provided the funding to do that. So we're trying to get that done, 18th Avenue intersection is just terrible. So hopefully they can implement some of their patching program and do some of those areas that they need to do. Again, we're, we're just maintaining it now, as we're required to do, with the funding they give us to maintain it.
What about 20th Street?
What's that?
What about 20th?
20th Street, we, again, we've submitted grants for that, we haven't been successful. It's on our CIP, but it's not currently funded.
My constituents hate that answer.
It's, yeah, it's, again, it's like most streets, we need to improve them, they have a need, they're beyond their life expectancy.
We got $26 million.
But I think that's very important that the residents know about 11th Street. We really don't own 11th Street, that's a state highway.
That's correct.
And we really can't do those changes, because they look at us to fix it, because that's all we hear, the street is horrible, but we really can't touch it without approval from the state. So we need to really get proactive and kind of get that information out. Not saying it's gonna, you know, be an excuse, but it softens the blow when people understand that we can't do it. It's not that we're just, you know, abandoning it or just not thinking about it.
Yeah, we get about $90,000 a year to maintain 11th Street or 67 and 92, the one ways in the downtown, which is not a lot of money. When you're plowing it, striping it, pothole patching it, it doesn't pay for it really, but...
Mike, it's my understanding that we could do some, we could do that road without Illinois funding, correct? I mean, there's...
I'm sure they would allow us to fix their street.
Yeah, but I mean, isn't there a way that, I mean, obviously, we're being handcuffed by the state right now. Now, what if we have a, you know, obviously, we have infrastructure problems beneath 11th Street. Now, where is their responsibility if we have to go in and it's a major, and we have to replace that? I mean...
It's our responsibility to fix what we disturb.
Correct. So that's what I'm saying, so it could be done with other...
Our money.
It could be done, we would hope that it would be a partnership. And we thought that honestly, we would get better favorable and a little more chances of getting a grant that we've applied for on a federally owned street, but we still haven't been awarded.
That's your street.
Right. We're applying for your street to be improved.
Because First Avenue is the state's too. We're gonna be here all night.
First Avenue is...
First Avenue's the state, the one ways are the state, 11th Street's the state, 15th Avenue, 15th Street is the state's.
Street to 5th Avenue is... The Beltway is not, and it's, there's a big need out there too. Unfortunately, the way it looks, the rescue funding can't be used for streets alone.
Fifth Street is the state's?
15th Street.
15th, coming off Centennial.
67 here, right out here.
Then First Avenue, along the rivers, all state.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many more pages do we gotta go? Well, I'm just like wondering, do we wanna continue this in a couple of days? I mean, how late are we gonna go tonight?
Guys wanted to do this tonight.
That's, I mean, of course.
Well, we'll be, I think we'll be through these pretty quick. Nathan, you wanna come up, talk about...
Randy Council wanted to come tonight, I didn't want to.
Watchtower site.
Sure, just briefly to report on this one, action step two, continue work to revitalize 11th Street Watchtower for temporary and/or permanent purposes. We have been approached about a farmer's market being located there in the fall of this year, 2021, at the southwest corner. We also, through our partnership with Dari, do continue to market this property as a development opportunity for, you know, permanent development. But it's nice to think creatively as to how a vacant site could be used in the interim. One of the challenges is the grading of the property in terms of temporary uses, but we will continue to support the request for the farmer's market and our review of that.
I have a question regarding that as well.
Okay.
I know the MPC 11 group, that was a big focus that they had. I mean, the last time, we had live meetings regarding the farmer, they talked about the farmer's market and putting it down there near maybe Community Health Center or somewhere in that vicinity. Have you been in touch with them about, have they discussed those kind of plans with you regarding their farmer's market idea as well?
So they haven't, they haven't been in session. So they haven't met in over a year, so there haven't been any further discussion?
I'm just kind of wondering if anybody's, I know, I still get emails from them, I mean, I know they haven't met live in session, I'm just kind of worried if that conversation's taken place at all.
We're actually working on something.
Okay.
And we're gonna have that conversation, whether it's farmer's market there or something different.
All right, thank you.
We're on it.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
I have a question for Nathan. So, and I know you're new coming into this, how long is, so we've had this Watchtower site vacant for too many years, I guess.
Five years? Six years?
So... Is the department ever gonna come to council with any recommendations? Like, I mean, how many years do we think we should wait for some kind of big box or retailer or whatever else? Or do you have other ideas for what we can do with this site? So that we get it developed, something?
I don't have an exact answer to that question right now.
Right, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I mean, is that something that we could look at?
I would, sorry, not to answer for you, Nathan. But I would like the council to have a more broad discussion about how we envision that site to be developed. I mean, originally, six, five years ago, whatever it's been, the vision was sort of Uh, the vision was sort of a traditional big box retail development with an anchor store and a Steak and Shake or whatever on the outlot, but, uh, you know, I, I don't know how viable that model exists in 2021 with Amazon and whatever, right? Um, I mean.
There's a planning process that, you know, I can provide more information to you on called, called a charrette, where essentially, um, you, you convene a special planning session for a, a specific site.
Mm-hmm.
And so it, it, it could, you know, one thing that we could explore is the possibility of having a, you know, a, a separate, I don't know, maybe sub-area or site-specific plan from a planning standpoint of, you know, how that site could be developed or what the vision for that site is. That's really what the, the charrette process is, is kind of like a strategic planning session, essentially.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where, very similar, where you, you draw out the, the ideas from the community based on needs, et cetera, for what, what, what could be there. And then, once we have, you know, should we go that route? Once we have that, essentially, we have the community and potentially the council's vision for that property. Then we can work with our partners like, like DARI and others to promote that.
Is that something that comes through the planning commission then, that you work with?
We could explore what the, what the best forum for doing something like that is, but typically, it's a, a community, a community process. So if, if you think of, you know, like preparing a comprehensive plan for the entire town and then drill it down to the very microscopic site-specific level, it, it would be that.
That makes complete sense.
I, I like that idea that you said, community, because the community has lots of ideas what to do with it, other than a big box.
The, the plan commission, we, we could explore them, maybe, uh, engaging in being a, a facilitator of the charrette process.
They're looking for something meaningful to do.
But, but the idea is, is that you want to encourage, it, it's really a, this idea is really, or this concept is really a community outreach planning tool.
And we do come, continue to market that site, and we do continue to receive interest in the site, so, yes.
It hasn't been just big boxes.
There's nothing to move forward, but there have been a couple inquiries recently.
That's cool.
So. And there's always the NFL Museum to.
Ballbacks. That was done. Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Right, uh, so the next two are the, the downtown manager will be in charge of, but I'll, I'll just give a brief update there. So I, so I've talked with the downtown manager, and, and he's gonna come forth in August and September. And, uh, first, talk about his progress in the downtown, the meetings they've had, and they've already started some discussions on an SSA or something similar. And then, uh, he's already actually had some conversations about the mapping out, which is action step four. So he's gonna bring those forward in, in both August and September, and then just a full update of where they are so far. I can tell you, at the last meeting, they looked at, uh, some of the recommendations for the plaza, and they hope on their next meeting in June that they'll bring that forward with their recommendations. Likely, it will be, uh, a concept where there's a street down the middle and ample room on either side. But I think right now, they're looking at, their recommendation would be to get rid of the plaza. But, and I can't speak for them, but that, they have, they've seen designs and.
Yeah, I appreciate that they shared that report with us.
Yeah, so, but they'll bring that to you, and then council can start to make some decisions there.
Okay.
But I've talked to him on a number of different issues, and he's, uh, Jack Cullen, and he's quite excited, and, uh, everyone seems excited about, uh, what's going on down there.
I talked to him today.
Yeah, so.
Right.
All right.
The busy guy.
Uh, DARI's got the next couple. Liz, if you'd like to come up?
Um, I think I'll take five and six together because it's very similar in the sense that one of our tasks is to get together with two business groups, or actually three, and to start talking to them about what should we be doing in those areas. And I believe some of them have plans already, so it might just be dusting them off and kind of going through with the partners to talk about what are some things that we might wanna accomplish in those areas. So, um, NPC 11, they are scheduled to meet in June, and so we are gonna be attending those meetings and start those discussions in 11th Street corridor. There's a lot going on in 11th Street corridor in terms of business expansion potentials and, and other things. So that's gonna be, I think, a very, um, it's a good opportunity now in June to start those discussions. And then I have talked to, um, some of the folks up in the, um, uh, College Hill, College Hill Hilltop, um, the, the two groups together, and, um, they have not had any formal meetings, but hopefully, we can get, starting to have some conversations this summer as well.
Do you think, so I, I've often thought of this idea, and I don't know if it's a good idea or not, and I don't know with the capacity of DARI or the interests of DARI or whatever. We're seeing the benefit of, of, um, you know, creating an SSA, more or less, in downtown. But we have other corridors in the city that are basically the same thing as downtown, but just not in downtown, but there are other economic corridors. Would it be, at some point in the future, I mean, would it be beneficial to explore the creation of SSAs in these other corridors as well to support, uh, something that can be a little bit more sustainable than, than everything else DARI is doing?
I think that's a, actually a good topic of discussion, you know, for these groups. How ready are they to be more formal, you know? And I think that's, that sustainability question, and then how, what are the resources to do that? And that's probably one of the top models, so.
Right.
You know, and Main Street, Main Street's a great program, but it's not really a funding, you know? It's more of a, um, planning process, and so those can be explored as well. Uh, but I think those are great conversations to have. I think some of them are probably a little bit more ready than others, you know, for, for that, but.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
So along that same line, um, have we even thought about the discussion about 18th Avenue and 11th Street, that corridor, and those businesses in that area, or putting some, because that's a, that's a main entryway into the city? Um, and I know, like, what, and that, this is probably not this discussion, but some of the businesses there just sprucing it up a little bit, or even having something to come in there. So when we have people coming in, they're not just seeing abandoned buildings or, you know?
Absolutely, and that, that is that geography, you know, um, those two corridors. And so it, maybe it is even just finding funding for facade, you know? Right now, we have facade money and the city does as well, I mean, DARI and the city. So what we do is we partner on those dollars, and we've done facade improvements in both 18th and 11th and 11th Street. And so we, those monies are citywide. And so, but it is also that opportunity to have people understand, you know, what we have available. So it's educating them, and also, we have limited dollars at this point, you know? So, again, in Ju, in July, can we say, hey, let's expand our facade program? We have so much interest, you know, that businesses really need those kind of dollars. So that can be a great conversation to have for, for money.
Okay.
All right, Nathan, you might just come up briefly and talk about our rental ordinance.
Regarding the rental ordinance, uh, we did start annual rental inspections this January, but because of COVID, uh, we are, we've only been focusing on the outside of the buildings. We've, we've completed 561 rental inspections. That's 561 properties, not units. So some properties have a single-family home, some properties have multiple multifamily buildings, some properties have a single multifamily building. So that, that process has been initiated, and as conditions approve, we'll be expanding to, uh, indoor inspections as well. And we have a, a study session planned, uh, with you in September on, with some updates to the, the city's rental ordinance that we'll be bringing you at that time.
Is there a way that we can get that data as far as the, where the rentals were and kind of the conditions and everything?
I'll have to find out. I, I don't know how, I was given the number today, but I'm not yet familiar with the, the software, and, and I don't know off the top of my head how far down you can drill into getting those specifics.
Okay.
Are you, are you wondering if, you know, just.
Yeah, 'cause I know First Ward, we have a, we have a lot of rentals in the First Ward, and.
I see.
Just trying to get a, kind of a grip on what the conditions of those homes are, or those properties are.
Okay.
If, since we're talking about clarifying goals, and I know it's nine o'clock, sorry to take up more time, but, um, this one, I think that we can, we, we should spend more time really threading out what we wanna do regarding rental housing. I mean, the, the analysis of impediments to fair housing threads in here, and just capacity. I mean, we don't have enough inspectors to inspect all of these rental houses. And there's no, there's no entity that exists that helps tenants, or even renter, you know, landlords for that matter, right? I mean, if there were an entity that could educate or be a resource center for tenants to go to, to say, hey, my landlord's not fixing the giant hole in my roof, well, there could be some resources that the, that this center could provide the tenant to force the landlord to fix it, then we don't need inspectors going and inspecting it, right? So this is a much bigger conversation than nine o'clock on Tuesday. But we should identify capacity solutions to this issue, because I don't know what's being proposed, but probably not increasing capacity, so, we should.
All right. You gotta vote now.
Oh, right at the end of that. Turn the page. All right, we will do roll call.
Alderman Robinson.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Alderman Gilbert.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
All right, ID number 10, last one.
Goal number four, increase population through livable neighborhoods. Move to consider the motion.
Sorry.
Move to second. Mr. Jones, you up first, or no?
He'll answer for. Sure, he'll answer for, they're, they're all gonna be combined in these next things, so he'll answer for everything, I think, here.
So I'm speaking in regards to the Human Rights Commission and the Housing Commission, Fair Housing Commission as well. They are one and the same. Um, a little brief history is that probably a year or two ago, the, um, Human Rights Commission came before this council concerned about their, um, lack of ability to really implement any change when receiving a complaint. Their role is completely mediation at that point in time. Since this time, council previous to the new members have, uh, shown a little bit of willingness to look exploring more remedial, or, um, power stronger to mediation. And currently, uh, city attorneys are doing some exploration in regards to what is viable and what's feasible. When this first was explored, um, the most comprehensive opportunity to do something would be quite expensive for council, requiring quite a bit of legal assistance, which of course is salary in itself, aside from investigative powers that would be necessary for this sort of ordinance. Since that time, Mr. Morrison and Hector have been doing some more investigation, because you can imagine during this time of civil unrest, there's been a lot of interest in stronger Human Rights Commission powers locally, but that landscape is ever-changing. And so, at, the, the most recent update is that we have a draft ordinance that the Human Rights Commission is gonna be providing feedback on, with hopes to be, to have a, uh, presentation to this council of where we stand in this, the signed timeline of August 2021. Is that pretty good?
What we've been doing is actually kind of leaning on the state, uh, and modeling after the state model, because that's one that's been kind of time-tested and, and, uh, and has gone through some of the processes. So that's where we began, and then we were, did a lot of consulting with, uh, attorneys through the State Civil Rights Commission, and also municipalities that have had, uh, similar ordinances for a period of time. Because as you say, uh, the landscape is changing quickly, um, and things, what, uh, how the process works and what, what can and can't be done is changing, and so we're trying to, uh, um, come up with a, a workable, uh, more powerful, um, ordinance.
As we had in public comment, we heard from Kelly Thompson about, uh, you know, what COVID has taught us in terms of as a community and reacting, are you seeing as a Human Rights Commission, the re, the results or the, the reaction of COVID of seeing more need for fair housing issues coming to the Human Rights Commission?
No, we should, and the reason why I would speculate that we're not is that the Human Rights Commission's powers are only mediation, and they can't even compel someone to, uh, be at any meetings to talk about a complaint or, uh, as a complainant or being as accused, so.
Has COVID, uh, you seen from just maybe what you've heard from the King Center staff, has COVID intensified the need for some help with fair housing and some authoritative action on behalf of the Human Rights Commission?
Absolutely, and when we have received complaints, the vast majority of them have to do with housing and, uh, the, the conditions and being treated equitably and fairly.
So like what, when you were talking about, it's gonna cost a lot of money for staffing for something like this? To just get this clog fixed in terms of what we've had from COVID? Like, what would it be to staff something like you and Dave were talking about, 150 grand a year?
Um, uh, go ahead. Initially, that was the initial, the initial findings that in order to do this correctly, we would need more legal staff. You think in terms of Davenport, uh, Human Rights Commission, right?
Okay.
But it was along those lines, but that may not necessarily still be the case. What's gonna be probably more, um, important is that we have appropriate division of powers so that, um, there's no, um, conflict of interest within these, and making sure that the commission has adequate training and development so that they can enact their powers, uh, equitably, fairly, and correctly.
So it costs money to train your commission?
Absolutely, and we still don't know exactly what we'll be dealing with yet.
And so the, yeah, the state model we have, um, right, right now, as the ordinance is written, you don't have a separation, uh, like they do in the state. There, the investigative arm is completely separate from the prosecutorial arm, which is completely separate from who sits in judgment of whether or not you've met your, uh, whether you've met your burden of proof, basically. Because each one of those is, um, has to be independent, basically, of, of the other, because you have an independent, you have an investigative arm that can't also then make the decision. If an investigative arm says we can go forward, you can't have that same group then making the decision about, uh, what, what the remedy is going to be. And so there has to be a separation in order for you to have, uh, due process rights protected for individuals.
Are you still having the issue trying to get the subpoena power? Is that?
That's part of this as well, is what is, is that viable? Is that reasonable? And, and once these things are put in place, what will also be really important is having a strong marketing of the new revised Human Rights Commission so that people recognize that this is a resource, and it builds capacity, as you're talking to, uh, Alderman Parker, in regards to dealing with housing issues within the city of Rock Island.
Be to our economic recovery out of COVID. You need money.
And to have, uh, the subpoena power, they go hand in hand in order to have a subpoena for any case, whether it be a civil case, criminal case, there actually has to be a case pending. And so when you have that situation, you have to have these independent, uh, the, the independent units to bring, to properly bring a case for due, uh, due process, so they're, they're co-dependent or they're interrelated. Um, and if you have one, you should have the other so that there is a separation of powers and there's a protection, uh, of peoples, uh, of everyone's, uh, due process rights. And I'm guessing that after the moratorium is over, there's probably gonna be even more of a problem. Once the, once, I mean, once the moratorium for eviction and, uh, forcible entry into detainer, that is, there's gonna be a, a flood, a flood of.
Flood.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we've heard during public comment. What are we shoring up in order to get ready?
I hate to dwell on it, but didn't the state come up with, can't remember, the 50 million or something like that for landlords?
Oh, so Project Now just announced. I mean, Kelly, do you know?
Yeah.
The Illinois, which DARI is, uh, doing, in addition, Project Now called me this week. There's 750,000 in emergency assistance for, uh, um, housing that's gonna expire by the end of June if we don't spend it. But they don't have the money to put caseworkers out in the neighborhoods to deploy this information that we have housing assistance beyond what Rock Island economic growth. that we have housing assistance beyond what Rock Island Economic Growth had just announced this week. That's up on your website. We still have 750,000 still sitting out from the CARES Act funding, let her go, and the American Rescue Plan funding. We don't have the capacity to deploy these resources to our residents.
Yeah, but I thought there was a special fund for landlords and or renters.
There is.
There is.
But unless you can let people know that it's available, it just sits there.
We don't deploy it. We're not deploying.
It's as if they don't have a communication plan.
It's people, but the government won't let us use the grant to hire people to get some information out to the people.
God darned government.
That's what American Rescue Plan, if you read it, is.
Well, that's the conversation about increasing capacity. In addition to this, great work, thank you very much, Jerry, for everything that the Human Rights Commission is doing. But I will bring attention, Randy, because you're in charge of the goals. Empower Human Rights Commission to perform fair housing testing and fair housing ordinance is, you know, I mean, not to say it's like secondary, but it it got fewer votes than pursue cultural competency analysis, equity plan, affirmative action, diversity, inclusion workforce plan. None of that is listed here in the action steps. What are we doing on that aspect of this goal?
The fair housing testing?
No.
No.
The the bullet point above that, which got more votes.
Down below August for study session, August 2021.
Okay.
No, no work's been done yet up to this point.
You might want to maybe we could update that because we did just hear from United Way. They're doing cohorts on cultural competency right now. Maybe we could contact them. That's changed in the past year in terms of an action plan.
I mean, it's like the other plans that we have on the books. We have a downtown revitalization plan that we're not doing anything to implement. I mean, we are now slowly, but we have a regional analysis of impediments to fair housing. It's an analysis of all the impediments that exist in our community.
Yep.
To fair housing. It has a checkbox of all the things that we can be doing. We just need to do them.
Yeah, and there is a presentation on that in July.
What are they going to present? The things that are on the checkbox?
They're going to present the just that report so people, sometimes there's some misunderstandings on that report.
So we adopted the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing in like 2017. And we are getting a report as to what is in the regional analysis of impediments in 2021.
And what we're doing.
You get what I'm getting at here.
Yeah.
I mean, who's in charge of implementing the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing? What do they need to implement it?
And that should come out during the study session.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jerry or?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief?
Okay, so I'll start with bullet point number one, return to full strength with officers. I think it's important that the council understands where we're at with manpower and where we've been in the attempts we've been undertaking to try and reduce that that shortage. Currently, we have 11 sworn vacancies plus six promotions, which we would also count as vacancies. So that's 17 sworn positions that were down. Then we're down another four positions in civilian staffing. This is not taking into account individuals that are on light duty or some other leave, such as military leave. So we have significant staffing shortages. 2018, we started accepting applications for police officers in January. We held two applicant workshops that were conducted, had a total of 72 people attending. Applications closed in April with a total of 317 applications that were received. 79 people showed up for the physical agility and written testing. 31 then underwent background investigations and interviews with the Police and Fire Commission. 26 were placed on the final eligibility list. And out of that, a total of 11 candidates were hired off the list, of which three later resigned. Nine candidates were hired by other departments prior to our offer. Three declined officers, two failed pre-employment screening, and one individual expired on the list. 2020, we started accepting applications in January. Two applicant workshops were conducted with a total of 38 people attending. Due to COVID, applications were extended twice during this time period. Closing on May 29, 2020, we had 110 applications received. Forty-eight applicants showed up for the physical agility and written testing. Thirty underwent background investigations and interviews with the Police and Fire Commission. Nineteen people were placed on the eligibility list that was established in September of 2020. Total of six candidates were hired off the list, which one later resigned. Three candidates were hired by other departments prior to our offer. Four declined officers and six failed pre-employment screening. The eligibility list was exhausted. And we now go to 2021, started accepting applications for police officer in March. Two applicant workshops were conducted with a total of eight people attending. Applications closed on April 14 with 40 applications received. April 17, 22 applicants showed up for the physical agility and written testing and 12 are currently undergoing background investigations. So you can see that over time, there's been a steady decline in applications. So we struggle against that issue as well as far as returning to staffing, which is certainly causing us some issues as far as providing police services. I'll kind of touch back on some discussions that have been had about this goal of reduced gun violence. It's a rather broad goal that's stated. It's just is simply that. It's, I guess, what does that mean to the council? And and we've undertaken a number of action steps that you'll see on here that try to reduce that issue. But I guess I'm I'm here also asking for what other direction do you want to see?
Chief, stepping back just a little bit, and then I want, then I actually have a couple of questions. Number one, the the officers declining, is that because they got other offers before we got to them?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to be a little bit more aggressive in that then?
I believe so, yes.
Secondly, and I recall reading this several years ago about about the technology there that that actually pinpoints an area where the shots are being fired. Have we looked into that? And I know it's very costly.
We have. So ShotSpotter is the system. And Peoria has started off initially with one ShotSpotter system and expanded it to two. I don't remember exactly what one geographic location covers. It's a fairly significant range as far as physical mileage that one system would cover. But it is pricey. And I I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but I want to say it was somewhere around $200,000 a year.
Okay. Have we have we talked to anybody from Peoria to see the the success of that system?
We have. They find it to be very beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
On the technology lines, I remember when I first got on city council, we expanded the city's neighborhood cameras program. Where are we on that? And and have we, I guess, how are we measuring the benefits of that? Has it been beneficial?
It has been. Without going into specific details, some of that footage has been used in criminal investigations, including homicide investigations, has provided us investigative leads. So from that standpoint, in and of itself, it is is very much worth it. It's helped us to identify stolen cars, a number of issues related correlated to gun violence. And we're seeing a lot of these stolen cars that are used in this type of activity. So it does help with that respect. There has been a number of different methods that we've tried to use to fund this initiative. We really relied heavily on CDBG funding for it. The police department also contributed through the drug asset forfeiture fund. But it's not sustainable to grow a program like that. It's a significant cost. I would say roughly for, depending on the intersection that you put the cameras up, it could be $60, $70,000 or higher just for that installation. But it also builds infrastructure of other means that are beneficial to the city because there's fiber that's brought into the location and everything else so that can be expanded from. So it has other side benefits just beyond law enforcement.
After that initial 50,000 upfront cost, what would say in five years, we're going to have to upgrade them or maintain them? I mean, is it a big?
So it's the the hardware itself, the cameras. A PTZ camera may be about $3,000. So that that cost isn't too terribly bad. But it's dragging that fiber and electricians, and that becomes very costly. That's what drives the cost. And then, of course, there's always the backend issue of it that has to deal with servers, storage, and that becomes very costly, too. So that's all kind of factored into the projects as they develop. When block clubs were operational and we were attending those pre-COVID, there was always questions from the citizens asking for cameras in their neighborhood to help reduce some of the problems, the gun violence. And, you know, we we support that initiative, but that that is also part of council's input as far as cameras as well. I think the Alderman from Ward One previously expressed that he wanted to be involved in that decision-making process. We make recommendations. A few years ago, we presented a, I want to say it was a five-year plan with cameras to the council and funding and locations and things of that nature. But certainly, the funding for that was not there.
Okay, yeah. How is? How is your budget-making process? How does your budget? How does your budget-making process work with all of these vacancies? I know in other departments, we still budget for these positions, we just account them as being vacant. Is that what the police department does?
Yes. So those.
Maybe Randy, maybe I should defer that to you because that's kind of a yes and no.
Yeah, so we we budget for positions, but, for example, in the police department, we knew we weren't going to be able to hire those positions right away, and so they weren't budgeted for a full year.
Okay.
So typically, what we look at for the budget is when are these positions going to be hired during the year?
Right.
And so quite a few positions last year. For this year, we intend to hire, but we didn't intend to hire them on January 1st, since that was calculated into the budget. Now, every time an officer leaves, and we weren't expecting it, that's something, you know, we accounted for the full price.
Right.
But then the officer isn't there. However, then a lot of times there's overtime then that cuts into that.
And there's a severance package, and it has to be included in that consideration. Part of the other issue that we're still running up against is academy staffing. They are still at 50%, so they're not at full staffing. So the availability of positions has always been very difficult to get into the academy with. And you have to pre-plan this more than a year out and reserve academy space. So we reserve academy space in a number of places, just trying to lock it down and hold it. But the demand for more positions, more academy spaces, you know, we're not getting it. It's if you you had six and you're asking for nine now, good luck.
Right.
So.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Could you let everyone know, like, how many spots we have going into the? How many slots do we have going into the next academy that we've locked in? Is it?
It's it's six in September, and we're asking, we're asking the academy for nine. So if there's any cancellations, we're asking to be put on that list. And of course, it's everybody's asking, so it just depends on where you fall in the ask. And then in December, we also have academy slots reserved for, I believe, the State Police Academy. We have six there.
I'm not sure if this is an appropriate time to bring this up or not, but we talked about some ideas, I know, past. And maybe now would be a good time to to lot, to talk to the council about maybe locking in some of these candidates and things. I don't know if this is the right time, but I think it is since we're on the subject of staffing.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. Yeah, so one of the one of the things that we run up to again, and and I touched on it here in the presentation about when we were testing, is we're obviously, we're we're fighting all of our neighbors for candidates, for police officers. So it's the same pool that's testing for Rock Island is typically the same pool you see in Davenport, the same pool you see in Moline. And it's whoever can offer that position typically first. And when they do, whoever gets that first officer candidate accepts it. Now they're off our list, and, you know, we're we're expiring our lists through other agencies because they have the ability to hire quicker. So one of the proposals that we we had talked about, Alderman Poulos, Alderman Hurt, and the city manager, was about extending that offer earlier to candidates to lock them in and then take a look at what can we do with them candidates? Why they're not certified police officers, they can't go out, you know, and do policing activities on the street. There are other community-related activities that they can possibly do. You know, whether it's volunteering time at the King Center or at the Parks Department, some other initiative within the city so they get to know the community better, get to know other entities and and do some of that community service work that's been talked about. So that's something we would certainly support is there's a structured program for something like that. It also provides us the opportunity to do a little bit more pre-training with them and prepare them for some things that once they come back from the academy, they would have to start to learn. So if we can do, you know, some of the records management system things, things of that nature, it could be very beneficial to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Implement that right now.
Tomorrow.
All right, Nathan, just a quick update on act step three. You get to come up all the time tonight. You don't know what's going on yet.
I should just stand to the right of the podium. Promote neighborhood and connect with neighborhoods. I mean, the the update is that we will we will be before you in August of 2021. I I think, you know, reading through this and jump in, Randy, this this may be one where we could use some more direction or maybe I could use some more background on this particular item. I I know that on the city's website, we do have a section, you know, purely informational that highlights, I believe, 21 different neighborhoods in in Rock Island, describes the neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods that have had a neighborhood plan prepared at some point in time has, there's a there's a link to that plan. I I'm just not exactly clear on what we're trying to accomplish here. We could look at that part of the website and look at ways that we could enhance it. We have excellent GIS capabilities now. And so as I'm reading the the second bullet point about promotion and mapping of amenities, promote walking distance to libraries, parks, things like that, we could explore creating a neighborhood map for each of those. It may already exist. I I'm not entirely familiar yet, but highlighting some of those neighborhood amenities is something we could explore.
So we used to have neighborhoods that were fairly active.
Right.
And then we were, staff was fairly active in that, too. We had more staff at that time. And, you know, we we created some things like a low interest, actually a forgivable loan or a grant, you know, to do signs or banners. And we had one neighborhood that took took advantage of that. But the other neighborhoods really are not as active as they once were. One is sort of active, one is not active at all. And this is really meant to talk about, you know, can we get some more activity in those neighborhoods and maybe start some new neighborhood organizations? And then use some of this money that we've identified to promote that neighborhood, put up banners and just get the get the people of the neighborhood involved.
So so look at some ways to possibly reactivate.
Yes.
An interest in some of these neighborhood groups.
So the Broadway neighborhood is quite active, but that's it, really. The the Green Bush neighborhood is sort of active and Keystone is.
Used to be active until their driving force.
Yeah, so how can we how can we go in and help? Now, part of that is we have, you know, one person on staff that does that in addition to everything else. We don't have a person designated toward neighborhoods, which we did at one point.
Would that be beneficial to partner with, like, Community and Carrying Conference since they kind of are in those? I mean, because they they're having the same. I mean, because they they're having the same problem. They they can't really do a lot of stuff because they don't have the the same activity level from a lot of the residents, but.
They don't have money for staff to be out in the community to do the work with our residents. She needs more organizers for Community and Caring Conference.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just basically where we're at. No one has the infrastructure to carry out the work on behalf of the city.
I think this is another capacity challenge. At one point, the city's CED staff was full of neighborhood organizers that went out there and literally knocked doors and organized neighborhoods.
I see.
And we used CDBG money to fund a Neighborhood Partners newsletter and facilitate neighborhood community meetings, not in the individual neighborhoods, but across the city, all the different neighborhoods, getting together to address problems, stuff like that.
And I apologize. I I'm speaking a little bit on behalf of myself, just not.
No problem.
Fully understanding this.
No judging.
I have not, I have not consulted yet with some of the staff in my department who maybe can better inform me on this and give me more of a historical perspective.
No problem. I mean, this, I I hope you find this useful. And I guess what I would say is we need to figure out how to increase capacity because we do have neighborhoods with plans. I mean, it's crazy that the city of Rock Island has neighborhood plans. But Broadway, Green Bush, I mean, these neighborhoods do have plans on the books of how we're gonna improve the neighborhoods.
How we can engage with the neighborhoods toward implementation of those.
Right. I mean, it's it's cool. It's honestly, it's what made me move from Davenport to Rock Island was neighborhoods, right? And unfortunately, just, you know, yeah, I mean, Green Bush meets and bless their heart, but it's a bunch of volunteers that meet once a month and they they're able to organize quarterly neighborhood pickup, stuff like that, which is good, but it's not the same level of organizing that once existed in this city. And that is one of our assets that makes us unique compared to our neighbors. If we lose that, then we lose a lot of identity of Rock Island, I think.
Well, I think, again, the overarching issue is that, the communication, because that's why it's hard to figure out how to promote neighborhoods. We don't have the communication piece fixed. We can't promote the neighborhoods if we don't have a means to promote the neighborhoods. We can't just throw it on a website because the website just doesn't have that capacity to do that, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We'll be back.
All right.
When I started at Bi-State, we had planning assistance that we actually went door-to-door in some of the neighborhoods and did the structural surveys for, I think it was Jill and trying to think some of the staff.
Alan.
Yeah, way back when. So everyone, I mean, there was literally a neighborhood plan for every neighborhood in Rock Island.
That's awesome.
The beautiful thing, but it happened in the nineties. It hasn't been since.
I was only ten.
No, you were ten years old.
Okay, so.
I would have been seven in nineteen ninety-five. Thank you very much.
Area Realtors, one of the things that, I'm sorry, one of the things that we're trying to do is build a better relationship with our our developers and Realtors and for two reasons. One, on the residential side, and then two, on the commercial and industrial side. So all about our inventory as it relates to economic development and having a better relationship on how do we work with them so we can market their product and and help us develop our product. But then on the residential side, I think, again, if you've been paying attention to what we're talking about at DARI, is educating on the differences or, you know, why Rock Island. And we've been looking at our residential housing costs compared to our neighbors, and we compete very well. We actually have a lot of great assets here. Our cost of living is extremely low compared to a lot of our neighbors, and housing is a big part of that. So what we want to do is educate our brokers, honestly, and have them understand what do we have here? And then also building those relationships and then get an understanding of what are our gaps or what are the barriers for them to do development here. So our first thing is, we thought we'd have this social and get everybody together, all the brokers, and just start talking about some of these things, but we're gonna take a different approach. And that is meet with the individual agencies and and have some discussions at that level this summer. And then hopefully by fall or the end of the summer, have a social where we bring them all in together. So that's kind of our game plan related to that. But the other thing I want to mention is one of the goals was to develop a resource information on all of the residential housing resources that we have available to our people here in Rock Island. And so that resources guide includes all the city programs. It includes the nonprofit organizations and then also some of the state programs, and that is live on our website. It's done. And and we will be, again, having that, we'll present that to you at a study session in June. But there are a lot of programs out there, especially right now. I I do want, I always want to mention this, that the Live Work Rock Island program that the city participates in financially, it is one of the best programs for attracting workforce. You know, we're able to provide a down payment assistance to people who are hired or are working with one of our Rock Island employers. And and with that, we can now use another state program to help them with rehab, renovation, and then also down payment assistance. And now there's a new state of Illinois program. It's called Smart Buy. And this is, we're one of the communities that qualify for this. And it is, I think, a game changer as it relates to trying to attract workforce because what it does is it helps with money for down payment assistance, but it also can provide up to forty thousand dollars for student loan forgiveness.
Forty thousand dollars?
Forty thousand dollars, up to forty thousand dollars. And so to me, if you're wanting to attract that population of young people and, I have two.
Paying their student debt off till they're forty?
The issue, yeah, the issue, I think the catch of that is you gotta pay the loan off or you gotta match it, like you gotta match it or something. There was a hook that I.
Well, it's it's it's, it depends on the size, it depends on the size of house you're buying. That's what it is, you know. It's that, but it is a student loan forgiveness, you know, if you, related to buying a house in Rock Island.
That's a game changer for a young adult coming out of college, looking for a job to look and we have affordable housing and cheap housing in Rock Island. Now I can forgive my student loan.
So your police officer that you want to hire, where, I don't know where it went, you know, or that, a, a, a teacher or, you know, whatever. You know, to attract people to Rock Island, young people, that is a game changer. It is.
Huge game changer.
It is. So all of those, those resources are on the, on the website, and our job is to market those programs as well. Thank you.
I have a question. Do we have a link from our website to all these programs?
Well, we're actually, on Facebook we do, but on the website, we have to have, we have to have it linked. The city needs to pick it up and and put the link on it, and I just don't know if today, if that's on there yet. It just, we just went live on May fourteenth, I think. So I just, I'm not sure if it's on the city's website yet or not.
What a great program.
I think, wasn't that the link for Live Work or not?
Yeah, Live Work is, absolutely. Yeah, that's a program.
Not this new thing you're talking about.
The Smart Gap, I don't know if, are all the resources, I don't know if they're linked yet, but yeah.
That's a great thing. Smart, it's called Smart?
Smart Buy, not Gap. Smart Buy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, last would be Nathan again, just to give a final, our final step.
What we'd like to do with this, with this particular action step is come to you in in April with essentially just provide you with information. We'll, because I know, I know you're, some of you are experiencing issues in your neighborhoods now from constituents about property maintenance, lawn grass, things like that, tis the season. So what what we would like to do is just provide an overview of of what regulations the village has, what what staff we have devoted to this, what's involved. When when someone makes a complaint, what's the process, what happens, what are, what are the fines, things like that? Just so, just so you're better informed on how how we handle those things as a department.
Just as Alderman Parker had brought up, just the very part of like having this conversation of reading the nuances through certain these things. One thing that's come up since we've established this goal, I get a lot of calls about our dog ordinance.
Okay.
That's a, that's a nuisance. And can we add that to including sidewalks and beautification efforts? I mean, has anyone else been getting calls about dog ordinances?
In the winter months, I've been getting them, you know, and I actually followed through on a couple of them myself.
Can we include that in part of this action five? Is that even anywhere near the same?
We're talking about like dogs barking in the middle of the night?
Whatever a nuisance is to enforce it.
Different than what I've had.
Yeah, there's a whole big thread going on next door.
About dogs in our ordinance and it's a nuisance.
That's a block away from my house.
I know.
So do we include that to action step five?
We can throw it in there, that police handle.
I think we need to relook at our whole dog ordinance issue.
Because they're talking about the winters, the cold, you know, it's out in the cold.
Even in the summers.
I mean, calls together.
Talk to someone that's a constituent that's called you and me about it.
But once again, I'm gonna go back to, you know, once, do that sort of thing, if the police is having enforced that, shortage of staff and everything else is very difficult. It's, you know.
Again, I know that, but I'm getting a lot of calls on this one issue.
Yep, yep, we definitely include that.
We have an animal control staffer, right?
You do, yeah, yeah.
Do anymore. We didn't fund it.
No, we didn't fund it, right?
Yeah, we did.
Alderman Swanson.
We've got someone that goes out and looks at it. We have a.
Is that person in Public Works or what?
Got a police officer here.
What, yeah, what is the animal control? Because I see the car driving around.
Police.
Oh, it's police?
That's the police department or is that Public Works?
It's, I believe it's police.
It's police.
Well, that'd be good to know.
Who's, who's in charge of the animal control?
So is it like a uniformed police officer driving around inside that little animal control van?
No, it's the chief.
It's the chief?
Yeah, you have Byron who is, he, his, his uniform looks kind of like a park ranger. It's brown rather than blue, but he.
Yes, community service officer. He's a civilian, civilian position. And they share collateral duties, animal control and abandoned vehicles. They're the backup for one another when one's gone, so.
Okay, and is that like?
It's not the same officer, though.
Not the same officer, no.
Is it a full-time position or is it?
Yes, they both are.
They both are?
Yep.
And and he responds to animal complaints that often or is there other duties involved in that position or?
There are a lot of animal control complaints.
Yeah?
It's a time-consuming process as well. So, I mean, it's confinement, whether it's a dog bite, animal running at large, you know, it's, it's, there, he has plenty to keep him busy. And again, they perform other functions while animal control officer may be primarily for animal control issues. He also does abandoned vehicles as well. So they, if there's nothing going on with animals, then he's working on abandoned vehicles and vice versa.
They handle also road kill.
Roadkill.
I was trying to find a nicer way to put that, but.
What it is.
Depends the size.
Yes.
Large animal, we call Public Works and they come pick it up.
If it's on Eleventh Street, on the city road, on a state road.
Which is the deal, but it's.
Call county?
The issue is, is that some of those cases, and there's a lot of complaints, but I gotta say that there's not much, you're talking about policies, there's not much ordinance, many ordinances or policies behind it with any teeth.
Right.
So if there's a dog, I mean, I get involved in several of them, I know, in the winter months and the police chief and I have talked about them. But, you know, if it's got a, if there's a dog or some kind of shelter outside, for example, if it's cold and there's straw or a blanket in there.
Story's over.
That's sufficient, even though it's not heated, even if it's, you know, there's no water, it's frozen. So the the lack of of teeth in it to do anything, they go out there and say, oh, they took it in for five minutes and that's sufficient.
Right.
So who adds teeth to that then? Us?
Well, that's, we would have to put together an ordinance or to.
We have an ordinance for animal control issues, but we also follow state statute. And state statute is rather ambiguous when it comes to identifying what's adequate. Adequate shelter, adequate food, some of the other language is used in there. So it, it's really, you you can't just pin it down. People are very passionate about animals, and that is, it becomes a very, very big issue. And can, you know, and so so we do what we can to enforce it. And we make sure the animal is cared for and, you know, that it has adequate shelter. But again, that's interpretation. What some people think is adequate for a dog, you know, there's minimum, kind of minimum basis that we follow guidelines. Do they have a shelter? Do they have water? Do they have food?
There's a lot of calls.
Gladly give away the animal control calls to somebody else.
Doesn't the county have an animal control thing?
Yes, they do. But they're not, they're not obligated to provide services for us.
Is there opportunity to collaborate with them?
That's been talked about a number of times and I don't think the opportunity exists really for it.
Okay.
Good question.
Thanks.
All right.
Oh, Randy, would this, do we have any more information about that software, see, click, fix? I think it was offered with the same company that does our website to to kind of centralize how we can request or the constituents can request nuisance or, I mean, violations and stuff.
Right now.
Okay.
One of the advantages to that is it, it interfaces with our Public Works software. So if you call Public Works, they put it in a tracking system. If you send Public Works something or if something comes through the website, someone has to manually enter that in with see, click, fix. If a constituent or you were to enter something, it goes right into their system. There's no dual data entry. So it's something we're looking at now. We've seen some demonstrations and we're gathering some more information. Davenport currently uses it. If you go on their website, you can see what it looks like. Constituents can go on and follow up. For nuisances, we don't have anything like that. It's in a piece of software that basically tracks the, you know, it's more for the inspector rather than for citizens to follow up on.
I think when I looked at the software, there's a way that you can actually customize that to fit that, that, that need also.
Yeah, it doesn't, it does not interface with our software.
Right.
It's got a list of certain current softwares, but ours isn't, isn't one of them.
Great.
But in Public Works it is, and that's where the majority of our calls go are to Public Works.
Well, I know something like that for complaints would definitely be needed because then we can, we can never be able to see where the status is for it.
Right. That's the advantage to that. Anybody can see the status of it.
That's just too much for you to try to, you know, when we have complaints, we have to go through you to try to get the status, and there's so many. So, okay.
It's hard for us to keep track of them. Is there a way to get a demo for us to see how it works?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we can. They've given us a demo. Or you can go to Davenport and report a complaint.
Well, I mean, is this for the residents or for us?
Bottle over there.
See what it looks like.
That's what they need. Right now, they don't need that.
All right.
We can see what we can get for a demo. The best place would be just a quick one here at a study session, I think, so everyone sees it.
Well, yeah, I think it would be helpful because I think, well, I know Moses and I feel like we've been inundated since we.
Yeah, I know.
I'm creating my own process.
And the thing is, citizens can just do that, right? They don't even have to call you if they're.
I mean, for real.
Welcome aboard, because we get them.
Google tweets, I've created my own process.
I got the whole city.
And what save you? I mean, I can't even imagine.
I got a bunch for the whole city, everybody. All right. I think we need to do a roll call on this one.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Hurt?
Yes.
Alderman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Keenan?
Aye.
Seven zero, motion carries.
One of our marathon meetings, that's for sure. We are at item number eleven.
ARP process discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Set by council. Or I guess I could just table, or no.
No, you have to table to a date certain.
Well, postpone to a date certain, but I don't have a date certain.
Took us forever to get this to you.
I'm just gonna make a motion to postpone, I don't know, whatever.
Motion to table it, and then you can pick it up later.
Okay.
Make a motion to take it off the table. You could do that as well.
Can we have a discussion in this? You made a motion and a second, so there's.
I want to make sure the motion is correct.
Right.
That's what I want to make sure.
You're making a motion to table. There's, it's just a, as my understanding, it's an up and down vote. It's not a discussion on the table. It's not a debatable motion, is my understanding. It's a motion to table.
And you, your motion is to table?
No, technically, my motion was to postpone.
Is that the same thing as table?
They treat them differently in Roberts rules when they discuss them. If you say, I want to just postpone to, if you pick a, if you pick a date certain, now if you change your mind about the date certain, you could go back and modify that at a later time, so.
I don't have a certain date here. And the next time the city council wants to get together and talk about ARP funds, which should be soon, but. Yeah, I mean.
Postpone till we can find a.
We're not gonna have this conversation tonight.
No.
No.
Right, so what I would suggest is that you could pick, you could pick a date, even though it would be a, even a regular council night, obviously knowing you're gonna change that, that you're going to change that date.
Sure, I'll do that. I'll postpone the motion to the next city council meeting.
Which is June fourteenth.
June fourteenth.
I will second that.
My understanding is that is distinct that you can have discussion on a postponement with a date certain, because they treat them differently. My understanding from Roberts rules is they treat those differently if you have a motion for postpone to a date certain, so you could have discussion on that prior to voting on that motion, is my belief.
So we can talk about it.
Okay.
And I, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, obviously we need to talk about this, but I don't think talking about it at nine fifty at night is gonna be a good use of our time.
I agree.
All right, so it's been, there's a motion, there's a second, is there discussion?
I agree, but I just, can we come to some consensus on a deadline that we have a session to discuss this by a certain date and time in June?
I believe he said next council meeting.
Right now, it's the Ju- June fourteenth, doesn't mean it cannot be changed, but it's uh.
Why don't you just? I'm gonna look for a date before that that's available.
Oh, to have another special meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, I I agree.
You want to have this conversation at a council meeting?
No.
It's gonna take a while. I'm gonna look for another.
Public was very clear tonight during public session that they want us to have a big discussion about how we do this. You know, we got one shot to spend this, they've been waiting since March thirteen, since the Biden administration told us we have money coming into the community. If we need to meet again before March thirteen to start developing a process of how to spend it, I'll meet before then.
Oh, we should meet before, we should have a meeting devoted just to that.
Absolutely. Where is it?
Whole list of ideas. I got a whole multi-page document here from Randy. We gotta talk about it.
We have to talk about it.
I agree, we gotta talk about it.
I will not disagree that we gotta talk about it. All right.
But there is some urgency with this, we're all agreed, right?
Yes.
Urgency?
Yes. But just not tonight.
Yes.
All right. We need to do a roll call.
Alderman Robinson?
Roll call is to postpone the ARP discussions until June fourteenth and/or a common sooner date.
Aye.
Yes.
Alderman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?
Aye.
Genon?
Aye.
Seven zero?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, see how he is. Move second, roll call please.
Alderman Robinson?
Aye.
Hurt?
Yes.
Alderman Gilbert?
Aye.
Swanson? Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Pulis?